Good evening and welcome to the March 29, 2018 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I'd like to ask everyone to please turn off their wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphone and taping of the meeting. And I will ask, not Mr. Burrows because he's not here, how about Ms. Boston to please lead us in a board prayer and pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance. Steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would should note at the last meeting that a member of the military kind of let me know, and I think that's right, that the flag should always be on to the to the left facing it, so we'll make sure that we fix that. Ms. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Good evening. Ms. Ahmed here. Ms. Boston. Mr. Burrows. Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Murray. Ms. Page. Ms. Kentaros Grady. Ms. Roche, here. Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Weisman. Dr. Eubanks.
Yes, I'm present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, please note prior to the start of the meeting that item, emergency item 10.1 was added to this evening's agenda as an emergency item. And colleagues, without if without objection, given the number of folks who are here, of interest to that, I'd like to move item 10.1 up to immediately following public comment.
Without objection. So moved.
And colleagues, I've also, I would also like, considering the number of folks who are interested in this topic, to move item 9.1, the request for now renewal of Turning Point Academy Public Charter School, to right after we do the calendar items. Is there objection to that? Seeing none, colleagues, I will ask you to please make a motion to adopt the March 29, 2018 Board Meeting Agenda as amended.
So moved.
It's been moved a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Colleagues may have a motion to approve the February 22, 2018 Board Meeting minutes.
So moved.
It's been moved a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We will now have a news break entitled "Having Seuss for Breakfast."
You can dish it out, but can you eat it? Are you guys going to eat this stuff?
No, thank you.
No way? No takers here, Lauren?
No takers.
Not even you, after all these years?
Not even me. I've cooked it many, too many times.
If even the organizer of University Park Elementary's annual Green Eggs and Ham Breakfast can't stomach Dr. Seuss's famously unappetizing combo, it would be understandable if the wee children in their Cat in the Hat hats also turned up their noses. But for the fifteenth year in a row, those green eggs, sprinkled with food coloring and looking every bit like pond scum, and that ham resembling nothing edible, have both found surprising numbers of volunteers mostly willing to take a bite. It's almost in there. It's almost in. Come on. Oh, he did it. What you think?
Mmm. I like it.
You like it? Alright. Alright, let's give her a drum roll. Mmm. Drum roll, drum roll, drum roll. Alright, here it is. Here's the big moment.
Can we have the lights so we can see?
Your face says everything. University Park's taste test is just part of an immersive reading experience staged on Dr. Seuss's birthday, March 2nd, aka Read Across America Day. Marching in for the first time, kindergarteners may look askance at what's being served, but they're soon joyously singing songs from Seussical the Musical, especially the one about that stubborn eater, Sam I Am.
I do not like the new way. I do not like them anywhere. I do not like them. Not with my mouth, not here, there, not anywhere. I do not like them. I do not like them anywhere.
I love it. I love it. I'm the music teacher, so it's, you know, a little bit my job to love it. But seeing the kids dancing and getting into it, that's what I live for. I love that. And they love the stories, so when they hear it in song form, they just come alive with the eating and and the stories that they hear and the imaginary world that we created here. They have an opportunity to really want to go back out and look for more books. If it's not Dr. Seuss, it's something else, and that's what we really want, for them to explore.
And if not every Prince George's School had gooey green vittles, truffula trees on the tables, and teachers dressed as cats in the hat, one even using her cellphone, then nearly all celebrated Read Across America Day like University Park also did, with adults reading to children, both in person and online.
I do.
I do.
I like them.
I like them.
Sam I Am.
Sam I Am.
And?
And.
I will eat them in a boat.
I will eat them in a boat.
And?
And.
I will eat them with a boat.
Some are red and some are blue. Some are old and some are new. Some are sad and some are glad, and some are very, very bad.
Produced by the school system's technology training team, the online readers' stories were followed by activities designed for deeper understanding and to foster a stronger love for the printed word.
We're going to do a Venn diagram activity of the story that you heard from Dr. Maxwell. What were some of the colors that you heard?
Red.
Red. What other colors did you hear?
Green.
What other colors? Blue.
I like to read.
And while reading gets a thumbs up from everyone, the kids still need to teach the adults a thing or two, or four, or six, about courageously attacking Seuss's eggy entree. Do you like the green eggs and ham? Have you tried it?
I have tried it.
Yeah?
I'm going to give it a middle of the road. It kind of depends on the batch, to be honest with you.
Of course, the big question I'm going to be asking all the kids today, do you really like the green eggs and ham? Do you?
I have not been courageous enough to try them yet. This is year four, maybe next year.
So a bit of advice, if you can't stand the thought of green egg on your gums, do what this toddler did for breakfast. Yeah, just go suck on your thumb. This is Dave Zarin reporting.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation. Each and every year, we celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday with Read Across America Day. I'm proud that the National Education Association, America's largest and proudest teachers association, started Read Across America Day and is still its primary sponsor. So congratulations to the NEA and to our local affiliate for their work. I now will move on to the report of the chair and begin my remarks by honoring the memory of lives well-lived and well-loved and and ask you to help me in remembering them. Ms. Judy Hansen, kindergarten teacher at Laurel Elementary School. Mrs. Kimberly S. Harris, resource teacher at Woodmore Elementary School. Mrs. Denary Allen, speech therapist at John Carroll Elementary School. And Dr. Nathan J. Fawcett Jr., father of Mr. Mark Fawcett, Associate Superintendent of Supporting Services. At this time, I will ask you please to join me in a moment of silence to remember their meaningful lives. Thank you. So I got a couple of, I'll be brief, but I have a couple of special recognitions I want to make. First, I want to, I know we missed a couple of meetings, and so we're thrilled that everyone who would have come to all of them came to this one plus. So thank you for being here this evening. First, I just want to make a special recognition of thanks and and tell you folks some, a couple of things I bet you a lot of folks don't know. First, I bet you a lot of you did not know that Prince George's County Public Schools has a longstanding and positive relationship with the country of Italy and particularly with the Italian Embassy and its ambassador. I bet you a lot of you didn't know that as a result of that, Prince George's County Public Schools offers more classes in Italian than any other of the local surrounding school districts. Yes, that includes Montgomery County and Anarondo County. In recognition of this tremendous partnership, our CEO yesterday was bestowed the honor of the Knight of the Order of Merit of the Italian Republic, or an Italian Cavalliere, Cavillier, something like that. So thank you, Dr. Maxwell, for your tremendous work. Let's give him a round of applause for that tremendous achievement. I'd also, with on behalf of myself and my partner, Carolyn Boston, we we have been really excited about a community organization that's served Prince George's County for over 25 years, and we want to recognize them. And so we're asked, please, will Ms. Barbara Dunn, Ms. Renata Johnson, and the Kiamsha Youth Empowerment Organization staff, please join us up front for an official proclamation? Yes, please, right, right there. And I'm going to, we're going to do a proclamation and and I'll offer you and take a picture with you. So let me say, yeah, that's a good question. I brought you up, I should have read the proclamation first, but that's alright, stay there, let, let the great people see, you know. So folks may recall that during Black History Month, I talked about the importance of of black history to to our youth and to our schools, and I wanted to bring bring Kiamsha here then, but because of my own mistake, we we have them here now. So I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas, for over the last 25 years, the Kiamsha Youth Empowerment Organization has influenced the lives of over 25,000 youth and families in the local community across the country and abroad through the use of history and character development training. KYEO, or Ki- Kiamsha, provides a group mentoring process that ultimately turns mentees into mentors. And whereas longtime citizen and community activist, the Honorable Dorothy F. Bailey founded Kiamsha, which in Swahili, which is Swahili for "That Which Awakens Me" in 1992 here in Prince George's County, Maryland. And whereas Kiamsha has positively influenced an entire generation and created some of the most community-minded and culturally competent leaders and entrepreneurs in our society. And whereas, in response to Kiamsha's commitment to impact communities by developing more knowledgeable and empowered youth, the Kiamsha Alumni Association was formed. Whether providing hands-on service or working diligently in the background, these dedicated former steering committee members have chosen to remain active. This powerful group continues to serve with a renewed commitment to ensure that the organization's rich history and investment in in the youth will continue to impact future generations. And whereas, holding a mission as substantial as empowering youth is not accomplished without considerable collaboration, through the support of sponsors such as Hewlett Packard, The Impact Group, and Bowie State University, Kiamsha has been able to continue its life-changing work. Over the years, Kiamsha leadership has not only developed but sustained affiliations with the Metropolitan Saturday Academy Science and Technology Program based in Washington, DC, the Community Partners Program of Prince George's County, the National Association of Faith and Justice, National Capital Area Cares, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History Incorporated, and the Carter G. Woodson Historic Home Committee of the National Park Service. The valuable partnerships established with these local, national, and international organizations has proven to be an essential part of Kiamsha and its accomplishments. And now therefore be it resolved that Prince George's County Board of Education hereby acknowledges Kiamsha Youth Empowerment Organization for exemplary service to the Washington, DC, and surrounding areas, and therefore be it finally resolved that the Prince George's County Board of Education proudly presents this proclamation to the Kiamsha Youth Empowerment Organization on this, what's today's date? 29th day of March, 2018. Again, this was supposed to be from March 20. Let's give a round of applause, everybody. Let's take a poll. Thank you, adult leaders and young leaders, for your tremendous work. Finally, in terms of upcoming announcements, April 4, 2018 is our CIP meeting. It starts at 5 o'clock. And April 12, 2018 is a board work session that starts at 1:00 PM. Both will be held here at the Sasser Building in the boardroom. Persons interested in speaking at these meetings must register with the Office of the Board of Education two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling 301-925-6115. This concludes my chair's remarks, and I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for the Chief Executive Officer's report. Oh, wait a minute, before I do that, Mr. Burrows wants to recognize a guest in the audience.
I saw as I was walking around my elementary school teacher, Ms. Lee, who, well, she's married now, Ms. Durney, who was my PE teacher and also got me involved in the safety patrols and taught me at a very young age that I could lead. And I probably wouldn't be up here without your guidance very early on. And I also see Mr. Moore, who is my 7th grade teacher, against the wall. And I just want you both to know that because of you, I'm here, and as I fight to put you on your proper step, I'm thinking about you two and all the other teachers.
And then also. Thank you.
Also, the youngest member of the Washington, DC Board of Education is here, Mr. Marcus Bachelor, who's doing great work in Washington, DC. I want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks, members of the board. I'd like to begin tonight by offering congratulations to Kayden Wilkins, a 5th grader at Melwood Elementary School, for winning the 2018 Prince George's County Spelling Bee last Friday. See here? You're standing up. Is he in the room? Awesome. Thank you. I want, I want you to know that Kayden is the youngest student to win this event, earning his championship in the 8th round with the word "Cambio." We wish him all the best when he represents our Prince George's County this May in the Scripps National Spelling Bee at National Harbor. I'd also like to speak for a moment about March 14. Students throughout our nation came together to participate in a national school walkout. The event called for students, educators, parents, and others to walk out of class for 17 minutes at 10:00 AM to honor the 17 lives lost in the tragic school shooting in Parkland, Florida. Although we did not organize this event, we supported our students' participation so their voices could be heard on this important national issue, and so did their teachers, their principals, their support staff, security, and many others. I want to especially, I want to especially acknowledge Amanya Page, our student member of the board, who came to the administration asking if we would be supportive, if we would help them by communicating with our principals and with others, and and we did. I would say that it was a, a very good event, very well-organized event. Our children and our adults did quite well. I was personally at Oxon Hill High School where the, where not long ago, we had a student shot at the school after school. And they not only honored the Parkland students, but their own, and they did a fabulous job, and they made me proud, as I am proud every day I am in our schools. So it was especially disheartening that in spite of our students' voices and in spite of all the national focus and attention on preventing further gun violence in schools, we were faced with yet another tragedy in our own home state with the shooting at Great Mills High School a couple weeks ago. I want you to know that the issue of student safety remains, well, I'd say student and staff safety, remains our top priority. We are continuing to move forward with the recommendations of our Student Safety Task Force and continuing our work with our county agencies and law enforcement partners to create safe learning environments in our schools and offices. Lockdown drills are going on, are ongoing to help prepare students and staff for emergency situations. In the event of an emergency, check your email or cellphone for messages from our district which will let you know where to report to pick up children should it be necessary. But please do not report to a school when it isn't in lockdown. For more information on safety, please visit our webpage at www.pgcps.org/StudentSafety. Mr. Chair, this concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. I'll now yield to the chairwoman of the Board Development and Governance Committee, Carolyn Boston, for a committee report. Ms. Boston.
Good evening. So I want to read the charge for the Board Development and Governance Committee. The Board Development and Governance Committee is charged with identifying or developing activities to increase the knowledge and skill sets of board members and providing guidance on the governance of the board. The committee members are Mr. K. Alexander Wallace, Ms. Patricia Eubanks, and myself, Carolyn Boston. We have met on the following dates since this school year, September 18, 2017, October 16, 2017, December 6, 2017, January 4, 2018, March 19, 2018. The committee's work and accomplishments is, we updated the board's handbook, which had not been revised since 2010. The newly revised handbook was completely distributed to all board members in November of 2017. We planned and hosted the board's winter board retreat held on February 3, 2018. Topics included Prince George's County Public Schools Perception Survey and Branding, Community Schools, Employee Appeals Process, Board Budget Priorities, and Equity Task Force. We reviewed and forwarded Board Policy 8100, Board Committee Structure for consideration to the board's policy, legal, and legislative committee. Our next, for next-term plans for our board committee would be to update the board's self-evaluation tool and distribute to board members for completion prior to the end of school year. Also, we would, we would submit, submit submission of Equity Task Force recommendation to the board and the CEO, and also debrief the board's winter retreat and plan the board's end-of-the-year retreat. And that is my final report.
Thank you, Ms. Boston, for that report. I will now yield the floor to Ms. Demetra Tobias, Associate General Counsel, for the legislative report.
Good evening. Good evening. You have a copy of the legislative report that's been uploaded onto Board Docs. It's, there's a lot of information included, so I won't go over everything, but of course I'll be available to answer any questions. There are updates on the status of our local bills, school safety legislation that has been introduced in recent weeks by the legislature, the status of bills that have passed at least one house by the crossover deadline of last week, updates on the state budget, both operating and capital, as well as information on education trust funding bills. So I'll be happy to address any questions that you have about that content. I did want to address for you, though, information that had been shared with the policy committee at its meeting on Tuesday, the most recent development on school calendar legislation, and just wanted to make sure that the legislative report includes the most up-to-date information that we have about the status of of the legislation. Most of you are aware that Senator King introduced a bill, Senate Bill 729, which would give local boards of education the authority to either increase the school calendar or decrease it by five days without state approval. That bill has passed both houses as of yesterday. The important procedural point to note, though, is that in the House of, in the House of Delegates, they made it an emergency measure, which means it's effective immediately once the governor signs it or takes no action. I don't get to that in a moment. But the Senate has to concur with that change, and that was not on the Senate's agenda on today. What that means is that we're anticipating that a concurrence could happen as early as tomorrow. The Senate will be in session tomorrow at 11 o'clock. Once they concur, we have no indication that they would not, because the bill did pass unanimously in its first form through the Senate, so we have, we have no indication that it will not pass, but that concurrence has to happen first, and then the bill is presented to the governor for signature. Under the Constitution, he has six days to take action on the bill. If he vetoes, they'll have to come back for an override. He can sign either between now and some point next week, excluding Sunday. Or if he does nothing, we have to wait for the six days to continue, for that clock to run, at which point the bill would become law and effective immediately. Just wanted to make sure you all had that information. We, I was trying to get any last-minute updates from Senate leadership, and as of this point standing here before you, that bill has, the concurrence has not happened, so the bill is not yet on the governor's desk for signature. I'll keep my report brief and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? No questions?
No questions?
Mr. Burrows.
Colleagues, I just want you to know that I spoke with the governor's office right before this. before this meeting, and he has not received the bill. As soon as he receives the bill, he will sign it in order to save the Prince George's County Public Schools Spring Break.
Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Tobias. Mr. Tobias, thank you for your continued leadership in Annapolis. Regarding Senate Bill 729, I know it passed unanimously in the Senate. Thank you. Passed unanimously in the Senate. Was it unanimous in the House as well?
Close. The vote was 132 to 6 in the House, so more than enough to override a veto if there were one, but the governor's indicated that there won't be one.
Perfect. Thank you. And I have, I've read bits and pieces of the bill, putting on my old job hat. Will this impact days that a school system has identified on its approved calendar, that if, those days were already intended to be used for snow emergency, windy emergency days? So in the case of Prince George's County, I know there's a lot of, not, not a lot of debate, because I wish we weren't in this situation, but that Wednesday that we're talking about amending, but the Thursday and Friday were already identified on the school calendar as make, weather makeup days. Would the five days that this bill add to the school calendar, could we use those days instead of using the Thursday and the Friday so we get the full week of spring break? I just want to clarify that. I want to know, that's the first time I got applause from the audience. I feel like Mr. Burrows right about now.
So, Mr. Wallace, my understanding is that the bill would, in any days for which we would be seeking a waiver from the state board, we would no longer have to seek that waiver, we would have five extra days essentially to work with, even if that put us past June 15th, which would allow us, if it were law, to be able to have those four days for spring break, if I understand your question.
Let me see if I can clarify. I think, I think you answered it. The waiver that we can submit as a school system, can we use for days that we have previously identified as days as weather makeup days? On that waiver?
So, Mr. Wallace, if I could, because I'm not sure we know the answer to that question, to be honest, because the way that the governor's executive order is currently written, we can seek a waiver beyond the 15th if we've made other modifications. So I would feel comfortable in saying to you that if we were to seek a waiver for the 4th, to be able to not use the 4th, people stay home, or vacation, whatever they want to do, and we add that day at the end of the school year, I feel comfortable that that waiver would most likely be approved by the state board because we've already used other days. So the, so the way the language reads is that there's an expectation that we would have made other modifications in our calendar. So we use, we added two days, we extended it by two days, we used February 9th, and we had built in the 5th and the 6th. So I felt comfortable before this whole political situation started in Annapolis, I felt comfortable saying that we could use the 4th, that you, you all could make a modification and use the 4th, or you could probably get a waiver to extend an extra day because you had already made modifications. I'm not sure what the bill was intended to do.
Yeah, it doesn't speak to the waiver process at all.
Mm-hmm. It doesn't speak to the process, or what, or what fulfillments you had to make in order to, to meet the, the process. So the governor's, the executive order and what the state board has been, the decisions that they've issued thus far are pretty clear, that there's an expectation that you would have made some modifications on your own. So Baltimore City last week was denied a waiver request because they hadn't reduced any spring break days at all. So I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, I'm not, I'm not certain that the legislation, if, if, if signed and passed by the governor in the next few days, was intended to, to do what you're talking about doing.
Okay. Baltimore City, they made no effort. We, we had five days built in. We use, say if we give back our citizens the 4th and the 5th, that's two of the five. We've used the majority of our days built in. I think that's a considerable effort. Do you think that that would be acceptable in the waiver process?
May I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I know we're going to discuss this when public participation is over and, and we certainly can finish the discussion there, but I believe, as I understand the bill and what I believe I heard Mr. Tobias say, is that it allows state boards to extend beyond five days without a waiver.
Right, after 15th, right after June 15th.
Right, without a waiver.
Without a waiver.
And so I think we need to make sure we're not confusing the authority that would be vested in this board, as opposed to having to go to a waiver. We're not asking to waive 180 days. We're, as a board, you set a calendar last year. You're going to be discussing an amendment to that calendar in just a little bit, and I, I mean, again, the law hasn't finished its way through the legislative process, and, and while we agree that the governor has said that he's going to sign it, it hasn't happened yet. And so, you know, we'll talk about that more when we come back, but I'm, I don't believe that this board is asking for a waiver at all should you make an adjustment. You're banking on that authority that is in this law, and again, I think we should come back to that when we discuss 10.01 shortly.
Absolutely. Again, that ends my, my question so far. I'm going to read the bill and then I'll come back.
Ms. Boston.
I buzzed in because I didn't know if this was appropriate timing, it may not be, but if it is, I'm pretty sure the chair will let me know, but, or if it's, should I wait for 10.1? But what I would like to do is to make a motion to my colleagues here to fully restore spring break based on the passage of Senate Bill 729 and the commitment of the governor, which you said in public, to sign the bill into law. So I don't know if I have a, if I'm out of place and I should wait for this.
Ms. Boston, it prob, why don't we hold that right till we get to that, to that item, and we'll go through the right procedure, but with or without the governor's approval, I'm pretty sure this board was ready to make some serious revisions with or without the governor's word. So I think we're going to be ready to go in a few minutes. So could you hold that till, till we're ready to go? We'll put you up first when, when we get to that item. Mr. Valentine.
Thank, thank you. Like my colleague, Mr. Wallace, I think this is a first for me. It's probably the first time, I think, we've given credit to someone who created a problem in the first place. And so can you tell me how we got here?
Yes.
Yes. Can you tell me how we got to the point where we could not take the flexibility out of our ability to do this with the inclusion of snow days this late as spring?
Yes, yes. The governor passed an executive order last year requiring local boards of education to open school after Labor Day and a hard stop at June 15th. And the reason why that was such an item of concern for not only our school district, but probably 22 of the other 24 districts, is that the control over the school calendar, when to open, when to close, how to kind of, kind of manage all of the different holidays, special days, et cetera, had always been under the, under the, the authority and control of local boards of education. So that's, that's why we're here. This bill doesn't change the Labor Day start date, but what it does is gives school systems flexibility at the end of the school year if, as in our case, we've had, you know, various inclement weather days and, and needs to close school more than expected.
So he took that power away from local district. Did he say why he did it in the first place?
He wanted, he wanted, based on the, the public comments, to elongate summer. He wanted summer to be summer. He thought that students didn't have enough time to enjoy that time. My understanding is that he also wanted to be able to benefit tourism and other industries in the state. So those were some of the public comments he made in support of the executive order.
So prior to this bill, he could at any point in time rescinded the executive order so that parents who are in, in this very minute trying to determine whether we're going to change the calendar, he could have relieved this, the rescinding executive order even as early as a week ago?
Yes.
So he had the power to relieve all of us of this, but decided to wait until this point?
Excuse me, excuse me, my friends. Excuse me, my friends. We appreciate your enthusiasm. Please, you are not allowed to disrupt the proceedings of this meeting. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay. So I, I just wanted to be clear about, you know, where we stand and how we got here, and that I understand the impact of this personally, as a lot of people do in here, but I just want to make sure we understand how we got here and in the future, how we should proceed. Thank you.
Anyone else around one? Round two, Mr. Burrows.
I also want to mention that our last snow day, there was no snow on the ground. That's the first thing. And then we also closed when it was windy outside. I think the, right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Valentine. And so what I will say is that we have an opportunity to fix this issue and talk about solutions. This bill is a solution to save spring break. I hope the board will vote to do that, and we had that opportunity today. So we could hash out how we got here, we could try to blame different people for different things, or we can come together today to save spring break, and I hope that we do
Thank you, thank you. I, 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 I know we are going to come together to save spring break, and we would have done that, again, with or without the governor's blessing, I believe, and it certainly, I, I just want to point out that we closed with all of the other districts on both of those days, and particularly the day when, any day when you anticipate, the decisions that are made about closing schools are made based on science and based on safety. And there is no way that we made a mistake in making the decisions that we closed. So now the question is how we, how we get out of the problem. And you know what? Once we stop arguing, we actually all agree with how we're going to solve the problem. So we're going to move on to that as soon as we can. All right. Any other questions? Thank you. All right, we are now moving on to public comment. Friends, because we had to cancel two meetings, one because of severe weather, we have extended, and we have 29 registered speakers on public comment this evening. I will note that you must speak to the topic for which you've been registered. The board will hear your comments but will not address your comments. At the sound of the buzzer, please complete your final sentence only. You may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. You are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, board member, CEO, executive director, et cetera, and please do leave a copy of your statement in the file box located next to the microphone if you have it in hard copy. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public process to move smoothly. I will also note, my friends, that I have been informed that some folks may have noisemakers of some kind and cowbells, and while we appreciate and expect you to, to support the speaker who you are supporting, we are asking you to please refrain from using noise-making devices either before or after people speak. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Our first speaker will be on, on Agenda Item 4.1, Yolanda Rogers. Is Yolanda Rogers here? Okay, our next speaker on Item 4.1 is Teresa Dudley, President of PGCEA. Make sure your mic is on.
It's on now. Turn my time back now. Give me my three minutes. I had to push the button on. Good evening. My name is Teresa Mitchell Dudley, and for the record, I am the President of the Prince George's County Educators Association, and I'm here tonight to talk with you about the grading systems in Prince George's County. I'm very concerned, and it is a shame, that when the Prince George's County House delegation asked for the CEO to come to Annapolis twice to report on the grading audit, that those, both of those meetings were canceled. That's a shame. It's a shame when we talk about grading that three of our school counselors at Duval High School were placed on administrative leave. And then when PGCEA had the unmitigated gall to have a press conference concerning the secret pay raises that were done, our members were sent letters saying that they were going to be recommended for termination, thrown directly under the bus. I'm very concerned, and it is a shame, that as a school system, that you don't look at what these grading issues really are and understand that you cannot fire your way out of this. Our members, our members at Duval High School are afraid for their jobs. Everybody is worrying about what's going to happen next, who's going to get it next, what school is going to be next, and we have seen the witch hunt that can happen because we saw the atrocities of last year after the Judge Savania Wood incident. You cannot fire your way out of this situation. When we look at the grading, and you're going to talk about the grading further on through, as we go through the meeting tonight, we're going to talk about the, the lack of training that some of our teachers did not receive about grading, about what the policies are, and that the paperwork is not right, that there isn't a line on a grade change form that says teacher's signature because we don't have the authority to do that. Those counselors didn't have the authority to change those grades. They didn't have the authority to set up any activities at that school. Every bit of that came out of the central office. And I, there is such a lack of distrust when the school system cuts off their emails so that they can't even get the evidence that they need to, to protect themselves. And there's a lot of teachers in Prince George's County that are just fed up and feel disrespected. And when we first met, Doc, my friend, when we first met, I said to you, do you know what the climate is like for Prince George's County educators? Do you know what we're dealing with, with this evaluation system? Do you know what's going on being three steps behind? It is time for us to relook at this structure, and we stand by our consistent efforts to reclaim Prince George's County schools, and we stand by.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dudley. We now have a number of speakers speaking on Agenda Item 9.1. I start with Keishana McFarland from Turning Point Academy. Hold on, hold, hold on, Keishana. I, I want everyone to hear what this young lady has to say, so I'm going to ask for quiet, please. Thank you. Please, please continue, young lady.
You've got to speak loud, speak loud. Good afternoon. My name is Keishana McFarland, and I want to speak behalf of, of my school, Turning Point Academy. Turning Point Academy is a great school. I would like it for it to stay open because this school pushes me and challenges me to do my best. When I struggle with some of my subjects, my teachers take the time to assist me and help me understand what I'm having problems with. I would love, love, love for Turning Point Academy to stay open.
Thank you, Ms. McFarland. Our next speaker is Joanne Obajolu.
Good evening.
Make sure your mic is on, young lady.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Obajolu. I have attended Turning Point Academy since 2nd grade. I am now an 8th grader looking forward to high school next year. Throughout my years, I have Throughout my years, I have made long-lasting friendships and learned many new things. This school has sheltered me from the bad things that come along with attending my neighborhood public school. Many teachers have helped me along the way. Mrs. Sales Selman was my teacher in second, seventh, and now in eighth grade. She's helped me become the person I am today. Other teachers have also impacted my life, such as Ms. Hanson, Ms. Honoray, Ms. Akinio, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Mayo, Ms. Green, Ms. Motley, Mr. C.A., Ms. Selman, Ms. Sutherland, Ms. Bennett, Mr. Smith, and the list could go on. I've had the opportunity to take advanced classes. I don't know where I'd be without Turning Point Academy. I hope that you consider the lives of the hundreds of students that have come to rely on the family atmosphere and support Turning, and support Turning Point Academy offers before closing its doors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Obajolu. Our next speaker is Jolene Obajolu.
Good evening, everyone. It has brought to my attention with great grief about Turning Point Academy Public Charter School closure. TPA has been a very supportive and caring school. For the seven years I've been going there, I've never felt uncomfortable. TPA teaches you many lessons. Teaching, TPA have taught us our rights from our wrongs. Character is the main key at TPA. Our five character words are courage, integrity, leadership, curiosity, and concern. Our five principles are destiny, humility, conscience, truth, and brothers keeper. These words start to mean more and more day by day. If this school shuts down, hopefully not, that will be one of the things that most students will remember, will miss. That will be something that we won't have any, at most of our new schools. We have really grown from where we were to the great careers we are today. Due to the impact, TPA has had a good impact on each, each and every one of us. TPA has some activities that help us grow. They have SGA and the National Honors Junior Society. I'm in both of those programs. Both of those programs have made me understand what being a leader is. These programs are also very enjoyable. Our facility can be very clean, and it can also have its bad days. But our staff is very worried about how our bathrooms and our facility looks. If we, if you get caught throwing trash, you must pick it up right away. I hope Turning Point Academy continues to grow and stays open.
Thank you, Ms. Obajolu. Our next speaker is Glory Omatayo.
Good evening, Turning Point Academy staff, students, and principal, PGCPS board members. My name is Gloria Omatayo. I have been at Turning Point Academy for two years, and this is my last year. The years that I spent at this school may have made me feel more confident and has given me more opportunities to be, to be a participant in honor courses. When I first got to this school, I was worried that I wouldn't fit in. But once I got to the classroom, the teachers went out of their way, not only to make me feel comfortable, but to make everyone feel welcome and included. I too feel that the school needs improvements, but I believe that the changes that we need to make can be completed as everyone is on board to do the work. I am praying that you will not close our school. The school provides a unique and nurturing environment for many students. There is no other school like it. Turning Point Academy focuses on wholeheartedly on building the character of its students. It has good programs and a victorious academy program. This is something my neighborhood school is lacking and why my parents sent me to this school. The teachers strive to make us the best citizen possible and have shown that they would never give up on us. Things like the school song, culture, respect, and discover goals are what make the school unique and special. TPA made me accomplish the things that I would never imagine myself doing. They gave me strength and wisdom. This is why I don't want TPA to close.
Thank you, Ms. Omatayo. Our next speaker is Michelle Akeem.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Akeem, and I'm an eighth grade student at Turning Point Academy. Turning Point Academy has been my learning sanctuary for the past six years. I can honestly say that my experience here has been fun, has helped me grow, and has been beneficial to my future. My teachers challenge me daily and give me the tools to survive in the real world. Ms. Motley is an excellent teacher that taught me Spanish 1 and Algebra 1. She gives me tips and strategies to ace my Spanish and math classes. Mrs. Bennett is guaranteed to improve your literacy skills. Mrs. Sales Selman encourages me to explore the world around me. Even my new social studies teacher, Mrs. Selman, has taught me more about my, our history than ever before and has improved my essay writing skills. Turning Point Academy constantly emphasizes the five words and principles. We have discovery groups every Wednesday to apply them in the real world. We also have every-grade performer character work. Where else can you get that? Turning Point Academy has helped me build lasting friendships that I'll carry into the future. Turning Point Academy is the first public charter school in Prince George's County, in Prince George's County public schools. It sets a precedent for all the charter schools after it. Without it, where would other charter schools look as a leading example to make smart choices that impact the people around them? Overall, Turning Point Academy is a great school, and I would hate for the next generation to miss out on all it has to offer because Prince George's Public School System chooses to close it. Save our school and save TPA.
Thank you, Ms. Akeem. Our next speaker is Lorna Gail Howard.
Good evening, Prince, Prince George's County. Turning Point Academy is a well-educated school. It has accelerated Math 1 and 2 for sixth graders and Advanced Reading and Math classes for seventh and eighth grade. In eighth grade, I was granted the opportunity to be in the Advanced Algebra 1 and Advanced Algebra, Spanish 1. You can earn high school credits that way. Turning Point Academy is known as a character ed school. It represents the five principles, humility, truth, conscience, destiny, and brothers keeper. I am granted accommodations that make me academically successful. At my old school, my grades weren't the best, but since I started attending this school, my grades are better. I almost got straight A's here for the first time. Turning Point Academy has helped me improve my self-esteem. I have made amazing friendships. My friends are a major part of my family. I have an awesome, I have two awesome math teachers named Ms. Motley and Mr. C.A. They have both opened my shell, and now I participate in classes. My reading teacher, Ms. Bennett, has improved my reading abilities like grammar and comprehension. My social studies teacher, Ms. Selman, has improved my essay writing by providing me with an essay organizer, which is an outline of your essay. My science teacher, Ms. Sales, has taught me more science than I've ever known at any other school. My test grades have increased dramatically. My teachers are like my family to me. I've learned so much at this school, I wish I didn't have to leave. Please don't close this school. This school is a major part of my life. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Howard. Our next speaker is Terri Floriet.
My name is Terri Florio, and I am the mother of three children at Turning Point Academy. As a means of supporting the staff and students at TPA, I joined the board in 2015. I am here to express my pressing desire that TPA remain open and operational. In researching our options for education, my husband and I preferred charter schools because we were hopeful about the autonomy of a school system not tied to the constraints or competing priorities of the entire county. TPA rose to the top of our list for, one, because of opportunities. Along with staff, TPA board members were in discussion about an academic program that was designed to address academic achievement gaps. Number two, for character education. Having the additional and intentional support of a school that promotes topics such as concern, leadership, and humility contribute positively to the development of children. This is especially necessary in a society where people won't hesitate to shoot up schools. And number three, transportation. This allows us the school and daycare of our choice, which offers us a savings of approximately $4,800 a year. When considering my options within the local school system, I am disappointed, and I have no faith and confidence that my children will have a better experience in schools run by the county. And again, this is why I chose, chose charter schools. I've attended some of these very board meetings where parents have stood before you and complained about facilities issues that include the last major renovation having taken place in 1969. And I've heard stories about parents who've had their children in classrooms with temperatures that read at 40 degrees. Non-charter schools do not go through the same degree of scrutiny, evaluation, or site visits as charter schools, which means that I have even less assurances that my children will have a better experience in the local school system. I ask that you disregard the recommendation of the review team, that you explore other options for improvement that are less evasive to the staff, to the students, and to the families, and allow TPA's doors to remain open. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Floria. Our next speaker is Deborah Shackelford.
I am Deborah Shackelford, one of the founders of Turning Point Academy. In the midst of all the upheaval of wrongdoings and accusations, I want to applaud Turning Point Academy. The very basis of our charter is built on establishing community around the student to encourage them. Your strong show of support here today is proof that you value the educational environment that your child is afforded at TPA. Over 10 years ago, we presented Prince George's County Public Schools a character education alternative that would provide a safe and character-building, immersed atmosphere for your children to excel. At the direction of our principal founder, we pursued a relationship with Hyde, based in Bath, Maine, whose students are outstanding, both in the character they exhibit and the academic achievements that they have accomplished. Ninety-nine percent of the students are accepted into college. Hyde's value, Hyde values effort over achievement, attitude over aptitude. The cost to attend is $50,000 a year. The county chose to, chose our charter proposal to bring this concept to Prince George's County, not just be another public school. The effort to bring the charter to the county was a Herculean tax, task. Relationships had to be forged, charters had to be written, the acquisition of a building, the arduous task of bringing together the right staff to create a cohesive atmosphere dedicated to the student's success and staff willingness to learn the Hyde system. In 2006, Turning Point was open. It was founded by three families determined to make a difference in the county. No charters, as charters are new to Prince George's County, they assigned a liaison to act as the intermediary between the charter school and the county. She immediately established her presence by presenting all the requirements she wanted the principal to attend. And when there was a conflict of interest with training of Hyde, she told the principal that she did not have to listen to us because we had no power to fire her. Despite the challenges presented by underfunding and lack of Prince George's County's support, we continue to progress towards our goal. We serve a demographic of students that would not have otherwise had the opportunity to attend the charter. We offer free busing, which the review board said was mismanagement of funds because we could have used that money to buy a building. We have employed Prince George's County Police Officers at our school. Our eighth graders are outperforming the county and the state. Seventy percent of our population are farms. Six hundred students is what we have with a waiting list of over a thousand. This coming school year, Hyde is working with us to make TPA a Hyde-accredited school. Our governing board consisted of 13 voting members, three of which were family members. Please, I urge you to renew the charter and let us continue the excellence in the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Shackelford. Our next speaker is Paul Shackelford.
Hello, everyone, I'm Paul Shackelford, founder and executive director of Turning Point Academy. Nancy Trios of the Washington Post wrote an article back in May of 2004 about the lost freshman. She intimated that the ninth graders in Prince George's County repeat the ninth grade two or three times, usually resulting in them dropping out, which, as we all have come to know, is a part of the aspect of the algorithm used to calculate how many prisons are needed. Part of our reason for opening Turning Point Academy was to correct this pipeline to prison problem and to make our county a better place to live by strengthening those that enter the ninth grade so that they are prepared to achieve. We have fulfilled our charter goals, and our scores prove our eighth graders test considerably higher in the county than the county or the state of Maryland. Three minutes is not enough time to address everything that's happened to Turning Point Academy, but here's just a few facts with no petty fogging. Our parents, students, and teachers deserve better than how they've been treated. We were told that we were fiscally sound, but then at the charter school, the charter school office repeatedly stated to our parents at the meeting at Eleanor Roosevelt that we were not fiscally sound, repeatedly. A fact checker stood up and corrected the charter school office. And then seconds later, the parents were told, yes, they are fiscally sound, but there were family members on the TPA board until a couple of weeks ago. That inference is Machiavellian? That's just another lie from the charter school office? As soon as we were given the letter from the charter school office to make adjustments to our board composition, we did so immediately. There was never a deal breaker mentioned in the past, simply that it looks bad or it doesn't pass the smell test. Okay? So we had all of our family members resign anyway, and we were able to get the former Director of Security for Prince George's County Public Schools to join our board. We've conducted active shooter drills at Turning Point Academy. We're in the process of setting up another drill with Homeland Security, the Green Belt Police Department, and our Prince George's County Police Department. We have officers on duty every morning. We are the only elementary and middle school in the county that has a police presence every day. Our families have been threatened with closure, the inference suggesting that teachers fill out transfer cards, that students go ahead and transfer to their area schools. We were even told that our kindergarten will definitely not be open next year. Definitely. Now, that kind of stuff to me is rude and disrespectful. However, it happened. And I just want to know, how is it possible to make all these definitive statements regardless of there ever being a public vote taken by the Board of Education? I don't know. Who's behind that? Who's the mastermind? I'm just asking everyone here, please vote to keep our school open, please.
Thank you.
God bless Turning Point Academy and everyone that wants to keep it open.
Thank you, Mr. Shackelford, very much. Our next speaker is Michael Peterson.
Greetings to school board and all those in attendance. Just want to say, I'm a proud father of children that go to TPA. And I'm also a founder. And in this school, when we started, we went through many days of working on papers and getting this all filled out so that we could turn it in on time and open the school on time. And we did it. And right now, what's happening to the children and what's happening to the school should not be something that we should have to go through. I think any problem that is happening with TPA in your eyes, there's something can be done to rectify that problem. We could all work together, because that's what we're here for on this earth, to work together and to do things together. And at the end of the day, having so many children be dispersed in other areas is not necessary. We need to figure a way to make this school what it should be. If there's any problem, we should make it so that we get it together and do things right. We have excellent teachers. We have excellent direction from our principal on down. What's going on right now should not be. There should be a conversation with us saying, hey, how can we keep you open? How can we do the things that needed to be right, happen in a way, in what you needed? And what's happened right now is, you know, you have a lot of people wondering why this is happening. And they don't know why, because they're not getting answers from you guys. And so in not getting answers, we're still left in trying to figure out how to deal with the situation that's at hand. And yes, I think we can do better. I think there are things that we can do better in terms of how we deal with our children, how we deal with the parents, how we deal with the teachers. how we deal with the parents, how we deal with the teachers. All of that becomes better if we join in together and do this. So all I ask of you is to allow TPA to go forth, make whatever necessary changes are needed, and then watch us grow into a great place, not only for TPA, but for the community and for Prince George's County.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Our next speaker is Patricia Peterson.
My name is Patricia Peterson, and I am the principal founder for Turning Point Academy. And as my husband just spoke, we have seven children, four of which have went to Turning Point, two of which have excelled both in algebra and in Spanish and beyond. They're already in their AP classes in high school, and we have a third grader and an eighth grader now. So we chose Turning Point because we want parents to have choice, and if you poll these parents, they're choosing Turning Point, and they want to continue to be able to choose Turning Point. Now, as the founder, I put together the charter that we are abiding by, and I listened to the concerns of the county. I understand that you have laid out some things that you believe that we need to address. I do want to say, it's been ten years. We've had our anniversary. Seven years, and at each point, someone has stood from Prince George's County Public Schools before this board and talked positively about this school. They have said that this school has met its charter. They have said that this school has met its finances. They have said that it has met its educational goals. So you could say, well, what is the problem today and what's happened in the last three years? What is the issue? Well, those problems or issues that the county is laying out apart, as far as the education, as far as you mentioned, whether our strategy is subpar or not. The strategy that we've laid before you has both an educational component, but it also has a character component. I think what they believe is missing is details about the interaction between our board and our school, and we can continue to work on what those details. And I believe that the community can come together and determine just how that school interacts. I've had multiple conversations with this community since this issue has started, and we can talk about how more should we interact with our board? How much more should we talk about the goals that need to be met? We can do a dashboard so you can see readily all of our goals, but you can tell the things have been, everything that we've said we were going to do, we've done them. You can see from the testimony of the people that it's being accomplished and that they're making progress. You can also see it from our scores, and you can see it from our community, and the way everyone says, when they come to Turning Point, what type of community we have. That can be sustained, and I do believe that this community can come together and present an alternative to the board, and we'd like an opportunity to do that, because we believe that we can move forward and accomplish everything that we're supposed to and everything that we committed to this community to do. And all of you, I tremendously appreciate you coming out, all the work that you've done to help our school and to be here for us. We will work hard, meet with us, talk with us. It's not enough to say, well, we asked you for this, and then you sent us this. We asked you for this. Tell us what the rubric is. We have it all, just let us provide it to you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Our next speaker is Lydia Morgan.
My name is Lydia Morgan. I have been a part of Turning Point Academy family since 2012. TPA has contributed significantly to the academic progress and character development of my two children. We are very pleased, my husband and I, with the school and its performance. I am very concerned about the proposal to close TPA due to allegations of nepotism. That was what I was told when I went to the meeting at Roosevelt involving the Board of Directors. Based on my personal and professional judgment, these concerns can be easily addressed by changing the composition of the board, which I was told was already changed, and the members. They can sign conflict of interest policies annually to identify and disclose potential conflicts. I'm terribly concerned with the recommended closure of TPA. It will have an adverse impact on its students, their families, the staff. TPA is an exemplary school that provides an outstanding education to our children in an atmosphere that promotes excellence, trust, safety, and support for the surrounding community. Removing our children from an exceedingly positive environment is a draconian way to address an issue that can be resolved through far less invasive and destructive measures. We can work as a community to fix this problem. There are a lot of people here. I am concerned. What am I going to do? Take my children out of a school that they've come to love? I know all these teachers. I love them. Even yesterday, they had this, on Tuesday, they had a character development program, and my son, who is six years old, he was hiding from me, using his laptop when I told him he was, and I said, remember what you were told yesterday about integrity and honesty. And you know what he said? You're right, mommy. You're right. And my son, that is six, knows what it means, knows what integrity means. Normally, I would say, you know, you're lying. Why are you lying? But he knows how important it is because of people, that all these teachers that are standing here before you. I mean, without the transportation, how would our children get to school? I work in DC. I don't have the time. It takes me an hour and fifteen minutes to come here. How would I get to school at three to pick up my child? I wouldn't be able to work to provide for them if I have to go there and pick them up. Please, please, keep our school open. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, and thank you, students, parents, and staff, for your tremendous commitment and dedication. We are listening. We will move on to public speakers for non-agenda items at this time, and we start with Genesis Carpenter Orozco. I thought she was coming up. Is Ms. or Mr. Carpenter Orozco here? Okay, let's go to Belinda Queen.
Good evening to the parents and everyone. I am Belinda Queen, and I'm speaking on putting kids first for a change. One of the first things I want to say in putting kids first for a change is no school should be closed. As a grandparent who received the Grandparent of the Year Award from Turning Point Academy, my oldest grandchildren has went there. I have volunteered there for years. It is a great school, and I have three more grandchildren there. I have fifteen grandchildren in Prince George's County Public Schools. Kids first for a change. And I want to also address that I've been watching the board in my time. I'm going to talk fast so it doesn't even matter. You need to watch the speaker and give them the respect that they deserve, the community, the public, and the kids. No offense, all that other stuff, we should have put the kids first for a change. We have babies who had school today. Kids need to go first. I don't know how much to stress that to you guys. Your agenda of giving awards and everything else, put my babies first the next time. And putting kids first for a change. Find funds to retain skilled teachers. Okay? And I'm going to have to take my glasses off for this because I am getting older, but the most forcible drive of student success is great teachers. Prince George's County Board of Education must place a high value on retaining our skilled teachers. In return, the budget becomes manageable, and the process of grade schooling education remains to teach, to learn, and to educate. Invest in innovative strategies and technologies. I don't have to tell you that. We're still living in eighteen centuries. Schools are still like when I went to Northwestern in 1980. Come on, you guys. We need to be in the 21st century. I'm not even going to go through that again. Raise student standards and student achievement. Let our teachers teach. Let them teach. Support the home environment. With community schools, we can do that. Let's support the home environment. The African Bravo said, "It takes a village to raise child." Could not be more appropriate fitting here. As a society, we cannot just rely on parents to enforce and to teach at home. When home parenting is lacking, we need to depend more on our schools to fill in the gap. Community schools are needed. Transform public opinion through transparency, the most important. Our schools entrust you as leaders. You are elected, and you must understand the schools, you are elected to representative, and you must understand the school operate on taxpayer dollars. Therefore, our schools must not shy away from any budgetary out of sight. It is important that all funds are invested and being used honestly in pursuit of educating our children in the classroom. In closing, I'm coming like a tornado, and anything that's not right on that board is coming out.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Our next speaker is Phyllis Wright.
My name is Phyllis Wright. To you, sir, you was talking political. I'm not a politician. I'm a mother. I'm a parent. Teachers come first. Children come first. Stop taking our tax dollars, putting it in your pockets, giving, you all secret raises, and you know what they're doing because you hear. How can they get raised when you don't know nothing about it? How can, tell me this? Tell me, how do all of this go on? Four hundred and fifty...
Speaking to your microphone.
Excuse me, excuse me. I need you. How many teachers could you have raised? How many teachers have we have hired? The money in your own pocket, each and every last one. Ms. Wright, yes, Ms. Wright, I just need you. I need you to do two things, Ms. Wright. We can't listen to you if you don't do two things. One is talking to the microphone, and two... Turn the mic on. Turn the mic on. And two, Ms. Wright, is to not...
Hold her time. Excuse me, excuse me. Point of order, Mr. Chair. You interrupted her, and her time is running.
We'll give her her time. We'll give her her time. I got no problem with you having your time. Absolutely. I'm asking you to please to... I am, because I'm breathing, I'm breathing. Thank you very much. You know what? These people just have gotten me so upset. Thank you. I'm just so sick and tired of coming up in here, talking to these people. We need some honest people on this board. We need a broom and a dustbin that sweep this trash out of here. Enough is enough. I'm tired, and I know every parent and all the teachers are tired. You won't give them their money. You won't put teachers in there. You put substitutes in there to babysit my child. Listen, I can babysit my child at home. I send my child to school to get an education with a teacher who's certified. Now, you, 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 and you over here, you all know what you're doing and what you're not doing. I got two people up here that's fighting for our kids in Prince George's County, and I'm going to tell you something. If it wasn't for you two, we wouldn't have had it over here. We wouldn't have known what you was doing, because I know what you're doing. You're not taking, you're not taking care of our kids. You don't care about our kids. You don't care about our children, because if you did, we all wouldn't be in here. You know where we'd be? We'd be on spring break. Oh, ain't no stopping my time, nothing. You gonna listen to me. Stop time. I stopped. I'm, 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 I have stopped your time because you're going to get your time, but I'm not going to, but I cannot allow you to attack folks. I can't allow you to attack folks, Ms. Queen. Listen, I'm a parent. I'm a taxpayer. You can't tell me what to say out of my mouth. What's wrong with you? What's wrong? That's your problem. What's wrong with you? Now, what is your problem? I told you before, I'm coming. I'm coming. I got babies in school. I want them to be educated. You telling me I can't talk, and it's a public board? That's the problem. I didn't talk when you got that money back there either, did I? You didn't tell me about that either. I didn't talk when you got that job at Maryland University, and you put that lady on the board, did I? So don't tell me I didn't talk. Now, you know, all I asked for was something simple, a plain education for my children. Get me some teachers, not no babysitters. Give these teachers money. Pay these teachers. Pay these teachers. Pay. And you, you don't understand. You need to go. You need to go. You need to go.
Yeah, but she's, well, accountability. I mean, if you listen to what she's saying about the raises, what are you going to do to hold the administration accountable for that? Okay. Well, she's a mother.
Our next public speaker is Cela Gomez Shao.
And you did it again. That's Cela, Cela Gomez Shao.
Cela Gomez Shao. Thank you for that correction.
All right. Good afternoon or good evening. Que queremos un director de verdad? Cuando lo queremos ayer. Good evening, Dr. Maxwell, members of the Board, and Dr. Eubanks. For those of you who are not bilingual, I said, what do we want? A real principal. When do we want him? Yesterday. Yes, yesterday, like five months ago, when I stood here before you on October 12, 2018, and you heard me, but you didn't listen. I'm here to repeat myself until I am satisfied that you are putting our students first at Duval High School, and I'm here to stand in solidarity with our Duval counselors who were thrown under the bus for political gain. What kind of examples are we setting for our next leader, some say? Not a very good one. I say baloney, the right kind, the one that stands up to hatred, discrimination, bullies, and crooked people, even if they happen to be your boss. Or your boss's boss. Or your boss's boss's boss. Our CEO stated recently in a Fox Five News show that he's sorry about the unauthorized pay increases and, quote, "We'll be looking into it and correct the situation," unquote. You must do the same with the counselors at Duval. They followed orders from up the chain of command. How far does it go? I don't know, but I can tell you this, you can't have two kinds of justice. And thus, I expect all the counseling staff, all administrative staff, and all staff in the Alvarez Report, two hundred pages that anybody can read, that committed the same infractions as our counselors, to be in administrative leave tomorrow and be discarded as collateral damage like our counselors were. For anybody with common sense that has an interest to read the entire Alvarez Report, you can find plenty of examples of offenses occurring in many places. Some covered in Mr. Sibilla's interview with NBC News, and others names such as the use of QLM packets that Mr. Sibilla's letter said he was accused of, quote, "spearheading." I have proved that it is not spearheaded by him, but you won't do that. You know why? It would prove that the infractions committed were in fact systemic and that our CEO would have to answer how this came about or take the responsibility for it happening. What really, really, really hurts was the quote from again our CEO at the Fox Five News regarding the counselors at Duval, when he said, quote, "I believe in the rule of law" like some plantation owner. And they can appeal. I think our counselors had nine...
Thank you. Thank you for your commentary. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jana Parker.
Just to be clear, that is Ms. Parker to you. Now, I only have a hundred and eighty seconds to speak, so I want to use my time wisely. And although I'm facing the board, I want to address everyone in this room, and I want to get across one singular point. Don't forget. Don't forget that for years, you were told that there wasn't enough funding to put you on your proper steps pursuant to the contract when funds were available, but they had funds for new programs, new initiatives, a five hundred K salary and benefits for the CEO, seven million dollars, wait a minute, seven million dollars for one charter school, almost eight hundred K for an external audit that an internal audit already showed, raises for the CEO's cabinet and various HR people. Don't forget that they're trying to blame the HR raises that came in the last three months on somebody who retired in June. Don't forget that there are four elected seats on the school board that are up for reelection. Hold up, hold up. Don't forget that out of those four seats, two of those people running for reelection voted against the raises, and that out of those two seats... And that out of those two seats, one, District 6 seat, is the Vice President of the School Board, Chair of the Finance Committee, and received funds from the CEO himself, the very man she's elected to oversee during the time that she was looking at his... overseeing his benefits package. And then went on record as saying that she didn't see an issue with that, but gave it back after consulting PG CPS Council. Don't forget that although District 7 seat isn't up for reelection, he also voted against you when he abstained. Don't forget. And let's talk about how we got here. You got here because you were appointed by Rashawn Baker. You weren't elected. And let's talk about how this appointed board member on record stated that teachers would like resources instead of raises. I would invite you to take that packet of pencils that you were given before this whole meeting start and pay your mortgage with those resources. Pay your children's after-school activities with those resources. At the end of the day, we are not just teachers. We're your constituents. And I will make sure that all of your constituents know how you vote and what you do. You are not as powerful as you think you are. Therefore, hold everybody accountable. It doesn't matter if they are the deputy superintendents, chief accountants, chief of external affairs, appointed board members. And then hold everyone else accountable. Hold those board members that are up for reelection accountable. And don't... And you can wait till they get reelected too. Hold the county council members who aren't here, who aren't speaking out on these issues. Hold the delegates accountable that are against the elected board like Pina Melnick. Hold the senators accountable. And most importantly, hold the person who said he wanted to be held accountable accountable, the brother-in-law of the board chair, Rashawn Baker. Hold him accountable and don't vote for him. And you are what I said you were.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker... Our next speaker is Stephanie Lansing.
Hello. First, I would actually like to thank PG County for listening to the overwhelming parent opposition to moving the Robert Goddard Montessori start time. Parents engaged in a letter-writing campaign and 200 parents showed up last night at our special meeting to unanimously express our opposition. The Chief Operating Officer assured us that the start time would remain the same next year. I appreciate his willingness to listen and change course. While we prevailed in reversing this decision, this process revealed some systematic failures. The decision was made by the Office of Transportation in consultation with the Chief Operating Officer, but the decision was revealed to the teachers by HR. During this HR meeting, our teachers tried to voice their concern about the effect of the time change on our young students. They were told, and I quote, "Be quiet. If you don't like the decision, you can get your transfer papers ready. I will leave a stack at the door." These are my students' amazing... These are my children's amazing teachers. And they were told by HR, maybe the ones that got the inadvertent raises, to get their papers ready. These are the teachers that now we have fought to train, to get Montessori training. These are the teachers that now teach class sizes from 30 to 35 students when just a few years ago, they were 20 to 24 students. We are asking our teachers to do more with less resources and then we disrespect them when they try to give their opinion on how decisions would negatively impact their work environment. They deserve to be heard and respected. I can't imagine being treated this way. Let this experience serve as a wake-up call to change the PG CPS culture. Our teachers are our best assets. And the climate right now is one of friction between Upper Marlboro and the teachers, which is driving away our best talent. The initial decision to change the start time should have been an iterative process with the parents, the teachers, and the school administration. Instead, we were informed of the teacher... of the decision after it had been made and had to fight against a decision we felt would harm our children. This is a broken process. There is little trust and engagement. Concerns were raised and ignored until we yelled too loud for them to be ignored anymore. But not all schools have as an active TPTA as Robert Goddard Montessori. How can we ensure that decisions that might negatively impact other schools are not made without proper input from their stakeholders? Teachers and parents need to be part of the decision from day one. In summary, PG CPS should be a school system that parents choose because teachers feel supported and administration truly listens to them. We need a large cultural shift in the way that PG CPS conducts business. Whilst we succeeded in keeping the current start time at Goddard, I hope this experience can shine light on the existing adversarial climate between the administration and Upper Marlboro and our teachers. And I hope that we can work together to improve engagement in future decision-making processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keisha Chase.
Good evening. It saddens me that we live in a county... That we're in a county that I grew up in, that I have raised my daughter in. A county that I was educated in has turned into a laughing stock as well as a head shaker. It saddens me that this county's school system is being run by a bunch of people who think they are untouchable. We have a CEO who thinks he is the godfather. We have a CEO who runs the school system along with county executive like he is the... Like this is an educational mafia. We have a system that is so corrupt that they think it is okay to give raises illegally. Our county exec... And our county executive does nothing. We have an administration who appoints their allies to the school board to assure that illegal as well as unethical practices are being upheld. We have an administration who... We have an administration who just does not care. We have a school system that thinks it is okay to lie and cheat at the expense of children and their failures. We have a system where it is okay to pimp out guidance counselors and teachers and principals to take the fall for the CEO and deputy superintendent. We have a system who pays over $500,000 to $600,000 a year of our tax money to a law firm who can never answer questions. And responses is always, it's something that they have to look into. A law firm where lawyers get unprofessional and agitated when something is questioned. We have a system that thinks it is okay to lie and try to censor our young people on the school board when they are the only ones who are fighting for our children, teachers and parents in what is right. We have a system that cannot pay their... That cannot pay teachers they are just due, but can pay people in central offices raises consecutively when they are not in the trenches dealing with what is supposed to be most important, our children. Teachers are mothers, fathers, caregivers, and counselors to the hundreds and thousands of children they have not given birth to. You teachers are the real CEOs. To my teachers, to my teachers, principals, guidance counselors, Troy Sebilla and Ms. Thomason, to David Rahila and Edward, we support you. These are the ones who deserve steps and raises. We stand with you when we say to this CEO, to the county executive, to the deputy superintendent, and to the Chair of the Board of Education, all appointed members, we do not want you in PG County. And today, we give you a walking paper.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cash Williams.
Can you give her a mic?
Because I am not able to talk because it's too hot in here. Somebody's gonna read for me. And it was already approved from the board before I came here today.
On May 28th, 2013, PGC County Executive said that he wanted to be over PG CPS because when people had a problem, they would know to come to him, that the buck stopped with him. I took his words seriously and I hope that he stands by his words. My name is Cash Williams, a resident of PGC and a taxpayer. Math teacher over 29 years, joined PG CPS in August of 2001, a whistleblower, assigned at Flowers High School in 2013. I am here to testify that Dr. Maxwell, CEO, Deputy Superintendent, and some of his staff in ELRO were and have been aware of the grade changes that have been going on in PG CPS. CEO knows it and has not stopped. Now, they are using the grade appeal process to change grades, in which they are violating PG CPS policy still. CEO and PGC County Exec have refused to meet with me. CEO knows that I have documents to show that grades at Flowers were changed at the grades... As the grades at Duval High School were changed. I was told to attend a fact-finding meeting on August 16th to see what information I had on grade changing after I sent an email to CEO about grade changing. Then I had to attend Lawter Mill meeting on August 28th.
Excuse me, ma'am. You're now talking about a pending employee appeal that will be coming before the board. We don't want to prejudice the board when it has its hearing, so I'd ask you not to talk about it.
Well, I'm just reading for her. I didn't even see this.
I'm just saying it's not appropriate to discuss a specific employee appeal when the board will be having to hear that appeal at some later date.
Okay. The prince, all right.
So, you can talk about anything but not the actual Lawter Mill?
I'm just reading for her. I didn't even see this. Read this.
I am not talking about the appeal. I'm sorry? I am not talking about the appeal. I'm just talking about the events that take place during the summertime up to them.
Okay. If you tell us that what your testimony is has nothing to do with your actual appeal, we have to take your word for it.
It has to do with what transpired up to them.
But if it doesn't have anything to do with your actual case, well, I'm fine with it.
Not exactly, sir. I'm talking about it.
Okay. But you said, we just have to be very careful, ma'am. We just... We don't want to prejudice the process.
I'm gonna try to stay here while you read. Go ahead.
In 2011, I had the principal at Oxon Hill High School jump up to reach over the table to hit me and the current deputy superintendent was informed of it and did nothing. I have been complaining and writing about falsifying of students' grades and attendance by the administrative staff at the school and about other issues since 2011. I have evidence to prove that these actions have been taking place. The unlawful grade changes is true and it is going on at Flowers High by the principal. He unlawfully changed some grades of my students before he left in December. For example, changing student grades from 22 to 70 without evidence of work to support the change, using discovery packet to pass students by moving a grade of 40 up to 90-plus without actually grading the packets allegedly. Students had unlawful absences for 49 and 54 days and some students' attendance were changed. On February 21st, 2018, I went to the Board of Education to schedule a meeting, BOE Chairperson. I also went to PGC County Executive Office about grade changes, the treatment I received from CEO and his staff, and that I was a whistleblower. After seeing the principal in the school around February 23rd, I sent an email to him about needing to discuss the unlawful changing of grades that he made before New Year's 2018.
I have to ask you to kind of finish that last sentence, please.
On the night... On the night of February 27th, 2018, I received a two-day suspension letter from CEO. This is a case of retaliation.
Now, we're talking about the case again?
I can't let you talk about that.
We can't talk about the case.
I am in this wheelchair and have these machines because of the neglect and treatments from PG CPS.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Clark.
Good evening, everybody. It's getting to be late night soon. I'm here today because of budgetary concerns. And my concern about the budget is how it was the last time I was here and spoke about the budget. This board chose not to put extra money in it to try and make up steps for teachers who've been loyal to the school system for a number of years. And yet, somehow, people up in administration got raises to the tune of 10% to 12%, which funny is exactly how... What percentage I'm behind. As I have discussed with you before, I'm in Chapter 13 bankruptcy because I didn't get my regular raises and I couldn't pay my mortgage. I like my house. I moved to this county to be loyal to this county, to be closer to work. This county has not been loyal to me. And it's in more than one way. But financially, this is affecting us. It affects us every day. One of my best friends actually committed suicide in the fall because she couldn't pay her bills and she was so far behind. You need to understand, we're people too. We have needs and we need our needs to be met. And once again, we're trying to find out the number of teachers who are affected, who've stayed, who've been loyal, but we can't get those numbers. And we need those numbers if we're going to lobby the county council to get us the money to pay people what we deserved. The county has made up for employees in other areas. They have not come for the teachers yet. And it is blatantly unfair that people who already make two to three times what we do are getting raises and we are not. I love this county and I've been loyal to this county. I have worked as hard as I could for a number of years. I've been injured on the job and I've stayed. I've been harassed by a principal and nothing's been done and I have taken it through the 4170. The least you can do is pay me for my trouble. I, as a teacher, have spent my own money, even when I didn't have it for other things, to pay for things for my students. In pre-K, our students need to learn to read. They don't have books in their houses. We had money for books. The books never arrived for our red bag program. I went and spent over $300 to make sure my students had books to read over the summer and so did the other pre-K class. Know that I spend what I can't even afford to spend to take care of my children. You need to spend what you need to spend to take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Delvin Champagne.
Good evening. I want to give a shout out to Turner Point, school choice. We need to expand school choice in Prince George's County. My name is Delvin Champagne. I'm a parent. I'm a taxpayer. I am a father, a husband. I am a former special education teacher and I'm a licensed occupational therapy... Occupational therapist practitioner. I am the executive director of a nonprofit in Prince George's County. It's called Strategic Collegiate. My nonprofit is a biomedical engineering and health sciences STEM-based organization that helps high school students matriculate from high school into health science majors. When I was at the Howard Graduate School doing public health and health policy, I was able to get my... To get a fellowship through the Howard Harvard University Joint Degree Program and I was able to do my research fellowship in Boston. Every spring, they have an annual diversity biomedical STEM conference. I was able to work... My nonprofit was able to work with the great STEM office in Prince George's County Public School... Schools who worked through the weekend to help these students get... Submit their application to get accepted into this conference. And we were able to get the talented 10 Prince George's County Public School students accepted from Ox... Five from Oxon Hill and five from Flowers High School. We only needed about... We needed $15,000 to take these talented 10 students who were accepted into the Harvard-MIT Biomedical STEM Conference, get to Boston and their five STEM mentors. I emailed everybody here. I emailed everybody in leadership and sent them a beautiful package regarding the students who were accepted to this program, admitted. Out of 5,000 applications worldwide, 10 students from Prince George's County were accepted. They rejected these students. They told these students that they could... That I have the email from Mrs... The assistant to the CEO. She emailed me and said, "We don't have funds." I emailed the CFO, "We do not have funds." It was... I have my email. It was on February 7th. They emailed me. One month later, miraculously, they found some money to give these fraud raises and told these beautiful children that they cannot go to Boston, to Harvard, to the Harvard Conference. But it's sad. But there is opportunity because there's a smaller conference in November that... that, that students can go to, but I hope that, I hope that, that they can appropriate $15,000 to take these beautiful STEM kids who are going to be doctors and, doctors and engineers to Harvard in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Suzanne Johnson.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Johnson, and I just want to speak to get us in a better position for next year's calendar. I've looked at the 2017, 2018 calendar, and again, we only have three built-in snow days. So we're going to be in a situation again, because when was the last time we took less than five snow days in this county? So, I understand that there's a lot of pressures coming from above you. I work, I'm a public servant, I understand there's a lot of politics that enter into my job, and we don't listen to the experts, but we are dealing with this reality. So, um, I've looked at the calendar, and it's even more challenging next year. There's 189 days between Labor Day and June 15th next year, okay? So that leaves you nine days to work with, and I understand that's extremely difficult. And everybody wants their spring break, that was the number-one priority, right? So that's four days, that leaves you with five to work with. Now, you have three snow days built in, there's only two other days in the calendar to work with, and they're both in November. We already have, next year, we have Election Day and two days of Thanksgiving. We have to give somewhere. We need to at least build in five snow days into your calendar. Otherwise, even with the law that's gonna, that may pass to, this week. We're going to be going all the way into June, the end of June. Nobody, everyone's saying, "Save spring break." Next, next year, when, when we go over three days, everyone's gonna say, "Save my summer," right? So we're going to be in the same situation. Now, Montgomery County, Anarundel County, all these other counties have given up spring break, but I understand it's number-one priority here to keep spring break. So let's give up one day for Thanksgiving, like many of our counties have. Let's have Thursday and Friday. Most of the, I'm sorry, but most of the other counties have gone to a two-hour release the day before Thanksgiving, let's freeze up one day. Look, I work in schedule management and risk management, that's my job. And if I were in my job and not addressing this risk of going over three days, I wouldn't have my job. Look, we know, it's almost 100% probability, it's a high impact for people to change their schedules at the last minute, we gotta deal with it. Let's, I understand people want to keep everything, you can't keep everything. Go to a two-hour release the day before Thanksgiving. Now we gotta talk about, there's another day in November, full-day teacher conferences, and I don't understand, and maybe there's more impact, maybe that's another day we can work with. A lot of the other counties have gone to a bunch of two-hour releases or two-hour, um, late arrival over several days to split up those six-hour conferences over several days. Do we, you know, that's two days in November, that if we take them in November, we are never going to get them back and have a chance to make up for them. And we are going to be going into the end of June, even with five extra days. So, please consider putting us in a better position for next year. I know the calendar was approved February 1st, but we gotta be realistic and know that we're going to take more than three days. So we're either going to be cutting from spring break again next year, or maybe adding five days at the end of the school year, and we're going to be going into the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Danielle Yarmus. Danielle Yarmus. Okay, how about, uh, Yvonne Basich?
I was gonna bring a, uh, book to stand on, but, okay. Members of the board, CEO, board chairperson, and behind me, welcome my brothers and sisters. My name is Yvonne Basich, and I am in my 30th year of teaching elementary physical education in our county. And I have the honor of serving as the vice president of my union, the PGCEA. I have appeared before boards of education in this room many times, and I am growing weary. So tonight, there are no games, just the honest truth. Let's put on our rational hats. Why would a high school guidance counselor decide, all on their own, to change grades in order to enhance graduation numbers? What could they possibly gain? Do they get more money in any form? No. Do they get status by way of some kind of recognition? No. Do they get a pat on the back from their principal? Not even that. Now remember, we are wearing our rational hats. There is no reason they would change those numbers unless they were given direct or indirect directions from a superior to do so. At that point, if they refused, they would be deemed insubordinate, and that is a reason for being fired. You must know, that is exactly what happened. Then, when news was made public, three guidance counselors were thrown under the bus and now have been recommended for termination. I understand that they were not paid this last Friday. One of those counselors is someone who taught my two daughters, who graduated from Sootland High School. This is painful. Please understand that. If you allow the CEO and your chairperson to get away with this, you will own the shame of having helped to perpetrate this travesty. There is still time to do the right thing, the honorable thing, the thing that is based on the truth. Insist that the counselors be hired back and put the blame where it belongs. This will take courage, or in Italian, coraggio. I hope you have it. I implore you, find your backbone, it must be around here somewhere. Mister Chairperson, arrivederci.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Kravitz.
Good evening, thank you, it's pronounced Kravitz, like, like Lenny.
Kravitz, thank you.
Uh, my name is Mike Kravitz, I'm here tonight as the president of the PTO at Benjamin D. Filloy Creative and Performing Arts Academy in Morningside. I'm here to, uh, address two issues on behalf of our membership, teacher pay in PG County and next week's spring break, which, maybe I don't need to continue speaking after some of this. First and foremost, this board must know that recent events regarding pay raises in the central office, while simultaneously denying a much-needed pay raise to our educators in this county, is an absolute travesty. The optics alone should shame this board. I'm here to advocate for our teachers, who have received your message loud and clear, that educators in PG County are an afterthought. In no world, real or imagined, is it possible to improve, or at very least maintain, teacher retention rates, motivation, or development while simultaneously belaying our investments in them? And that's at best, at worst, we're ignoring them altogether. The key to a successful school system is our teachers. Not administrative staff, not iPads, our teachers. Perhaps when our teachers are taken care of, there wouldn't be a need for grade tampering or adjusting student attendance records. Second, I want to address the issue of robbing our families of a spring break for makeup instructional days, should the governor veto legislation in Annapolis, which we don't have an answer on yet. While I, and the families I represent, fully support a full educational schedule, adding instructional days in lieu of spring break is not an answer. As a parent, I don't care whose fault it is. Blame the governor, blame this school board, it doesn't matter. What does matter is the families that are being financially burdened by canceled vacations and camps and other plans. Families are scrambling at the last minute to find childcare solutions. Families are caught in the middle of thrash unnecessarily caused by their government engaging in nothing more than urinary Olympics. Unexcused absences from school, students missing these days put school budgets at risk, and that's unacceptable. The Filloy community covers half of this county, which means half of your districts. I represent hard-working families who are being hurt by your decisions. We have military families who plan all year for spring break because they aren't able to take time off for the rest of the year. As I said before, I don't care who's to blame for these, uh, farcical situations. But we sure do, uh, care, and we know who to blame when we go to the election booth this year. I and the rest of the Filloy Falcons strongly urge this board to make immediate actions with creative and effective solutions to right these two wrongs to our educators and families. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Our final speaker is Daniel Dupree.
Hi, my name is Daniel Dupree, I'm a junior at Duval High School. Uh, originally, this, uh, was written by Bokeisha Kisa, but she cannot be here to deliver it. After accusations of grade changes, there was an audit performed to make sure these accusations were false and that all students that graduated were graduating because they deserved to, not because of unsanctioned grade changes. The following information was revealed by the state audit. First, at Central High School, significant irregularities were identified on the visit to Central High School. The cumulative folders of sample sets contained some older versions of transcripts, which A&amp;M compared to recently printed transcripts. The older transcripts revealed that class changes had been made to transcripts to meet graduation requirements. Several transcripts in the sample of graduated seniors were shown to be missing graduation requirement classes. Secondly, at Chrome High School, several students within Chrome's sample set of data were confirmed to have graduated on June 1st. However, multiple grade change forms with only the principal and grade manager's signature were processed on June 15th for these students. Upon review, the changes to the grades appear to have impacted individual student grade eligibility. No makeup work was provided to substantiate these changes, and after questioning individual records and discussions with the principal, A&amp;M was provided with emails from October 17th between the principal and teachers documenting the reasons for grade changing. However, no makeup work was provided. Third, at Fairmont Heights, the school, and, quote, "The school is not following the guidelines in regards of makeup work and grade changes." Quote, "A lack of proper documentation surrounding the graduation process was observed." The principal approved grade changes brought to her by a teacher or with the supporting, with or without the supporting documentation, and regardless of which quarter the grade change pertained to. When confronted with particularly questionable grade changes, the principal was not familiar with the situation, having despite signed the form. And finally, at Largo, Largo was offering service hours in exchange for financial donations to a charitable organization called Bread for Life. Flyers were found in the guidance office with the offering, "For every dollar you donate, receive one service hour." There was more evidence that irregularities were happening at schools. A&amp;M also included recommendations to improve the schools and grading irregularities that happened to prevent them from happening again. However, none of the recommendations were, included terminating staff. However, that's what happened at only one school, Duval, my school. The staff was fired for unsanctioned grade changes. Kevin Maxwell also stated on the matter, "Changes are being made to improve student achievement and strengthen the Duval community's confidence in its schools. However, the firing has only caused confusion and chaos. I'm a junior at Duval, and since the firing of my counselor, Chorsebilla, I've been confused on exactly what's going on." And many students feel the same way, feel the same confusion that I do. Um, that's why, um, in three days, a petition that we created to get back our counselors got 300 signatures. Right now, it's over 500 signatures. Um, I ask you to reverse the damages that have been done, and don't use Duval as a scapegoat.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment for this evening. Thank you very much for coming out and giving us your thoughts. We will now move on to, we're going to move to the emergency item. I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of 10.1, and I think, uh, you want to change something, right, Dr. Maxwell?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Eubanks. If, if I might, uh, if I might, before I respond to the board action summary, if I could perhaps share some thoughts about, um, steps that, that may be taken.
Please.
Because I think there's a couple of issues here. One, uh, we have the recommendation that I made for us to open on Wednesday, the 4th, which is not a part of the board's facility, uh, I mean, the board's calendar from the previous year. Secondly, I know that there's been some discussion and a, and a motion proposed about April 5th and 6th, which I see as a second issue. And then the third, uh, or second, or, I don't know, a second part of the, of the question. The third is how to, how to do the days, right, after that. And so if I could just suggest, first of all, I would like to recommend to the board, and I don't know if you need to vote on it, or whether you can do it as an agenda modification, I feel certain, fairly certain, that, uh, there will not be a need to open on April 4th after conversations with the state. And I would like to withdraw my recommendation for April 4th. And so you can vote on that, or you can accept it, or you can, however, you can, however you wish to do that. But the first item for me is Wednesday, April 4.
Since you brought that for us for action, if you're withdrawing it, we don't need to vote. There's nothing to vote on, so if you're withdrawing it, then there's nothing to vote on for April 4.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
And then I think that takes you to Ms. Boston's, uh, motion that you acknowledged earlier about the 4th and 5th. And I know that the legislation is not quite resolved, and that the governor hasn't signed it, but I think everybody feels fairly confident that it is going to happen. And so I think with some confidence, if this board wishes to alter its calendar, I don't have the authority to do that part, that's your calendar that you adopted. I will, my team and I will not oppose that. But I say that with a caveat, that if for some reason that legislation doesn't work out of committee, or the governor doesn't sign it because of what does happen in committee or whatever, we're still going to have to revisit what we do about those dates and the sitting executive order. And so I would just say that, taking action on Thursday and Friday of next week, our team has no objection to that change. But I would just caution the board not to make a decision about what to do about those days, whether to add them after the last day of school yet, because we don't know where that legislation may end up. Uh, but I would then also say to the board, just as one of our speakers stated, you are going to have people who, you know, if you, if you do that, they're going to raise questions about, "Well, I have a graduate class starting that, that week," or "I have, you know, a camp," or "I have a this," um, or vacation plans, just like we have for spring break. So, I just put that caveat out there, I'm not saying don't do it. There's a lot more time between now and June than there is between now and next week. So, that would be my recommendation or suggestions or counsel to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. Ms. Boston, I'll come back to you as promised.
Okay, colleagues, I would make, I would like to make a motion to fully restore spring break based on the passage of Senate Bill 729 and the commitment of the governor to sign the bill into law.
Second. They moved to second, and is there any discussion, Mr. Burrows? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Thank you, that motion carries. Now, um, I'm going to move on, I put, again, as a much-turning point, folks, I have, Turning Point is a first-reader item. Um, we usually tend not to discuss first readers, but I was guessing that we might discuss it. So I'm going to move to, and I, and I believe that the administration has some thoughts and ideas. So I want to move to, um, to that item, which is, uh, new business item 9.1, which we agreed to take on, uh, at this time. And I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of item 9.1.
So, thank you, Dr. Eubanks. I, I know that this board knows, as you stated, that this is first reader and does not usually have participation, but I know that there are a great deal of people here with interest, uh, in the matter, and we have been having a significant amount of conversation regarding Turning Point. And I would just like for clarity to say that... And I would just like for clarity to say that, you know, our proposal in first reader includes keeping Turning Point open for a year while we look for a solution. That is how we began this conversation. But not to admit kindergarteners while we figure out how to go forward. So the closure of the school in its, you know, I guess, most direct form is a year off. I would, however, say that we've also been having some conversations about how else to proceed or what other options may. And I've had conversations with a number of individuals from the community and Ms. Grady a great deal. And so I would say my team is open to coming forward with some additional options. But I would caution the board that as, I think I'll ask my counsel to perhaps talk about the fact that there isn't a current charter with the school, and that is problematic legally to run a school that is a charter school that has no charter. Ms. Battle, can you, or can...
Sure. So the charter agreement for Turning Point expired last year, June 30th of 2017. It took us about 15 months to get through the renewal process, and so the agreement expired. So we do not currently have a charter agreement with them. What's before the board for consideration is whether or not to renew. So there are various options that we can consider, and we can explore those.
When you say renew, they have no...
They submitted an application to renew their charter agreement, but there is no charter agreement that is...
To renew?
Yeah.
Okay, so are you, what are you recommending? That you want to postpone this and work on it some more, or...
We would be happy, we've been having the discussions about how we might be able to continue the school absent a charter. I would be happy if we want to postpone this or withdraw it and come back to this board at its next meeting or the meeting after. I mean, we are certainly running out of time, and it does delay a decision about the kindergartners that are pending. But if it pleases the board, I'd be happy to have my team, you know, come back with something other than, you know, simply moving on, whether that's another organization to run it besides us, although we said we would run it last year, or to run it and admit the kindergartners and continue to do that. I mean, we're happy to bring back some more proposals. The way it usually works is if you don't have a charter, you don't continue as a school. They submitted a renewal request without a charter, which I believe is what Ms. Battle just said.
When they first submitted their original renewal application, the charter agreement was still in place. It's just that we went back and forth so many times.
That they now no longer have a charter?
Correct.
And so that...
All right, folks, all right, folks, we're getting this straight. We're getting this straight. Give us some time. Thank you.
I'm just saying, yes, we would be happy to postpone this, to withdraw it and resubmit it for the next board meeting, and come back with some options as opposed to simply, you know, part of the idea of keeping it open for a year under our school system's operation and operating it as a school was to give us time to figure out the right path forward. If you want us to try to make some recommendations sooner than that, we'll be happy to see how fast we can move.
I think we might. So let me ask, I've got a couple of board members, I'm asking Ms. Cinteros Grady, who's been working on this, for her thoughts.
Yes, I actually had an opportunity to go to the Roosevelt meeting, and, you know, it did not seem to me from that point when I came back that I was convinced that closing the school was the solution. I do think I have been working with or speaking to administration about just, you know, making sure that we can look at other options and keeping the school open. So I'm happy to hear that, you know, and I would want as well for there to be, I appreciate, I think that was the founding, one of the founding parents that talked about the importance of really engaging and having some meetings with parents, so I look forward to doing that and listening a little bit more what can be done. But I am in favor of keeping the school open and really looking at what other options, whether it is RFPing the charter school, meaning that you would look at getting other board in place. And I think this is one of the things I've heard from some of the parents that I had an opportunity to talk to, or whether it's staying within the school system. But I'm pleased to know that it's a conversation and that is recommendations that are being looked at.
Thank you. I've got a couple of other board members who want to chime in, but so I just want to be clear from the administration perspective that your request, so I'll make sure we're speaking on the right thing. Essentially, your request is we postpone this and that you come back soon, hopefully the next meeting, given the time, with an alternative other than a straight non-renewal of a charter that might keep the school, that will keep the school open. Is that what is on the table before us?
No.
Okay, what's on the table before us? I just want to be clear.
So to be clear, specifically, what we've discussed is keeping the school open. So for example, I know that in our neighboring district, Baltimore City, they have taken over a charter school and the school system is operating the school. There's also the option of issuing a RFP and finding another charter operator to come in and operate the school as a charter school. So there are definitely different options that we can explore and consider and come back to you with a recommendation, which would allow the school to stay open.
Okay, I thought that's exactly what I just said.
I thought it was too, sir.
Okay.
Could I also just say that in addition to RFP, I mean, we do, there are examples and there are places where...
I didn't speak very clearly, Ms. Battle, did I? I'm sorry.
When charters, you know, when you come to situations like this with charter organizations, there's also a medium option of, you know, having another organization, at least on the short term, come in and have us contract with them to run the school while we look for the longer-term solution. So there are several things that I think are consistent with what you said. And I feel like there are a number of you that, you know, have had some questions about this, and I've heard some questions too about the kindergartners. If I feel confident that we're interested in finding a way forward to keep the school intact, I can also ask my folks about the release of the kindergarten letters as well. Understand, though, that if at some point, you know, this doesn't come to a good, you know, conclusion, then you're bringing kids in in kindergarten that would then have to make another decision. So we have to make sure that we're committed to trying to find a good solution that's workable for a good while.
Thank you. So given that, I have Boston Burrows and Ahmed. I don't know if, you know, I think partly we can save a lot of this conversation for when you guys bring us proposals in two weeks, but floor's open for you.
So I just want to have clarity on Ms. Grady's, with your statement. Are you proposing a motion for this board to vote on based on, if you do, I would gladly second that. I just wanted to be clear.
I just, I wanted to first be clear about if what we were saying was the same thing. And my motion is to keep the school open and to make sure that there are other options that we're looking at. I was interested in also hearing, yes, so that would be the motion.
So, I mean, so I'm clear, because I didn't hear a motion, but should we wait until we hear...
I can wait until the other, yeah.
But I'm saying, so it's up to you, we could do a motion now, or we can wait till we get an actual proposal from the administration, since they're saying they agree with us, they want to try to keep it open. So should we wait? That's my only question. But I'll wait for you to come back again. Let's let people speak.
Okay.
Wait for you to come back again. Go ahead, Ms. Boston, you have more?
That's, that's what I...
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It may make sense for the board to table the current first reader, and when you table, you have to bring back at the next business meeting. So by the next business meeting, we would have to bring back some solutions or recommendations. If the board would like that, that would be one recommendation. The other could be to request the administration rescind first reader. Doing so would then allow us to come back when we're ready, and that could be next meeting or a future meeting to be determined. Those are some of the options available, but those are decisions right in front of you.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows.
And when you come back, please be prepared to, I think I need greater rationale for how you made your decision, Dr. Maxwell. You listed three things. You mentioned nepotism on the board, which has already been addressed and corrected. You mentioned the facility, but even under your plan to have PGTPs operated for a year, they're still in the same facility, so your plan doesn't solve that issue. And then you mentioned the data. When I looked at Turning Point Academy's data, I saw they were outperforming almost 60 of our schools. And I ask that you, and I ask that you share the same level of urgency about Turning Point's academic standing as you do all the other schools in the school district. I think something that's very unique about Turning Point that I found out when I visited the school, and I encourage you to do that as well, Dr. Maxwell, is that they have a very high farm population. And the reason they're able to achieve that as a charter school is because they pay for busing. I don't think we have any other charter school in the county that has free busing. There are several poor, single parents in the school district that cannot afford to drive their students to a charter school. And so our poor kids are not going to a lot of charter schools. This group decided that it was in the best interest of their mission to bus students. And so their farm data is significantly higher than any other charter school that I've seen. That clearly has played some role in their academic standing. And so you have not convinced me that we need to close the school. You have not convinced me that the board cannot operate the school. You have not convinced me that this school's not worth fighting for. And so you going back and presenting the same thing is not going to be acceptable to myself. And so I ask that you work with Ms. Grady, who's done a phenomenal job at visiting the school. I know she's met with tons of parents there at the Roosevelt meeting. I know Ms. Grady is taking a leadership role and calling board colleagues to figure out how to keep the school open. I ask that you work with Ms. Grady and the school community who's willing to do whatever it takes to stay open, and you come up with a solution to keep it open. I think we can easily discard the school, but it's more worthwhile if we work to build the school and support the school, and I ask that you would do that.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed.
I completely agree with Mr. Burrows in that statement. I was buzzing in because I wanted to touch upon the point that Mr. Rhodes had mentioned about rescinding or withdrawing. I think personally and preferably, that would be the option I would take, and that would be the option I'd vote for. Just being here today and seeing the enormous amount of advocacy and activism of the school community at Turning Point, it just, I wish we had that, and I hope that we have that. I desire that we have that in every school in our county. And so with that, I would vote in support of withdrawing or rescinding the motion, the item.
Thank you. Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to echo Mr. Burrows' comments and just want to applaud Turning Point Academy's leadership for giving students that live in poverty additional options and academic access. Right now, we're winding down the work of the board and the administration's Equity Task Force, and a lot of the work that I am seeing now at Turning Point Academy in the student achievement can and should be mirrored throughout the entire school district. So I want to applaud you for that. And I look forward to, that's the second time, that's the second time. I want to let my colleagues know that the Equity Task Force report in the public is coming out in the next couple of days, so I will thank you, Turning Point, and colleagues look out for that distribution. I yield back.
Thank you. So that I'm clear about what Ms. Ahmed recommended and what Mr. Rhodes recommended. If you withdraw your motion, then we do not need to vote. However, one of the things you said is a withdrawal motion doesn't require a timeline for you to come back. And I think we're hearing a sense of urgency from this board, that not only that you rescind that, but you come back as soon as the next meeting, because we have to make some decisions about the school and about kindergarten and about folks' future. So would you be willing to be able to say that you'd be able to come up with some proposed solutions by the next meeting if you withdraw this? Thank you.
So, Dr. Eubanks, I know we have our charter, you know, folks here, and we have Ms. Battle and others here. We can bring you back options at the next meeting. I'm not sure that I can bring you back a new executed charter or...
Right, okay.
But again, I want to emphasize that we have originally proposed to keep it open a year, which didn't mean necessarily that we mean to disband it at the end. It means that we need time to find the right solution. So we can bring back some proposals and discuss those options with you. I don't know that if we want to provide another charter provider or a contract to run it in the interim, but none of those say implicitly that the school closes for a year. The only question has been, I think my team, you know, we recommended not taking kindergartners because of the tenuous, you know, question about not being able to reach a charter with them.
Thank you, Ms. Roach.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the Turning Point Academy community for coming out and showing your passion to Ms. Ahmed's comment. You know, it just really shows how much your entire community values what you do, so it was really inspiring to see that. I also was really impressed to see the combination of character education with, combined with some good test scores, so to show that it's not a trade-off, but it's about the whole child. And I think that we, as a system, can learn from many of the good things you're doing, and then where are the areas that we've identified for you to grow. I would hope that we can support you where we can, because we're one community. So I look forward to learning more about solutions for keeping it open and to continuing to support your community.
Thank you. So then are we at a consensus point where you will withdraw item 9.1 and come back with options for the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm in agreement with everyone that's here, but while we were having the public comments, I was looking up the scores on MarylandGrade.com, and I would be very challenged to close a school that is scoring above the state with their eighth-grade math scores. So I too appreciate you all. I too appreciate you all rescinding the recommendation today so that we can look at other options in keeping the school open and functioning. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. You have another comment?
My high school teacher is here, in the back. Ms. Deborah Neal, who was my student government advisor, who I raised hell with for many, many years. So thank you, Ms. Neal, for being here.
Thank you. So that concludes that agenda item, and we will now move on, we will go back to our agenda to item 4.1, and I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of our discussion item for this evening, the graduation rate audit response.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks, members of the board. The next item is to review with the board as part of our graduation audit response.
Dr. Maxwell, you want to wait? I think we have a mass exit, so if you want to hear...
Yes, ma'am, I can pause a moment, sure.
Sure.
We shall all be ashamed to try to close. Shame. How you doing? Excellent, terrific. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Item 4.1 is as part of our graduation rate audit response. As part of our graduation audit response, which we reviewed with the state board in January, one of the things that was in the, in the report in which we reviewed with you as well was a reviewing quarterly grade changes and that process and updating you. And so tonight's item is to walk you through the quarterly update from first quarter. Again, as Dr. Eubanks has said a number of times, this was supposed to be a month ago or so. So on slide three, again, this was in keeping with the independent performance audit, found that there's some governance structure gaps, that our staff does not consistently adhere to policies and procedures related to grading and graduation certification, that school-level record-keeping related to grading and graduation certification needs improvement, and that irregularities in grade changes and graduation certification were identified. And also, their recommendations were that we clarify policies and procedures and provide regular training to include awareness and understanding and improve the adherence to policies and procedures, to minimize the potential risk management and discourage fraud through the automation of record-keeping and increased controls, and to increase monitoring and accountability to ensure adherence to grading policies, grade changes, and graduation certification policies and procedures. And that is bolded because that is what we're doing today, is talking with you about that increased monitoring and accountability. We agreed with the auditor's recommendation, and we are beginning to produce individual school quarterly grade change reports and doing a random sampling of grade changes to be evaluated for compliance with policies, procedures, and timelines. And our system will work with the Board of Education to determine how best to continue to report that information. So as for the first quarter review, on January 6, the technology officer submitted the first quarter grade changes to the chief operating office and the deputy superintendent. On January 11, the deputy superintendent consulted with the evaluation specialists in the Department of Testing, Research, and Evaluation. On January 16, the executive team reviewed and approved the methodology for the random sampling to evaluate adherence to policies, procedures, and timelines for the first quarter grade changes. On January 19, the associate superintendents who oversee schools conducted a training for staff that would review the student records. On January 22, the associate superintendents who oversee schools conducted a makeup training for staff that would review student records. And on January 23 to 26, the student records were reviewed to evaluate adherence to policies, procedures, and timelines for the first quarter grade changes. For our methodology, there was a sampling of 1,121 students in grades nine through 12 that had their grades changed in quarter one. Fifteen percent of the students were randomly selected for the audit. The selection produced a sample of 170 students with 191 total grade changes. The audit, 187 grade change records for 168 students in 24 schools were audited by 32 members from the offices of the deputy superintendent and the deputy superintendent for teaching and learning. And this graph shows you a distribution of those audited records of 187. Twenty percent of them were 12th grade, 28% ninth grade, 22% 11th grade, and 30, yeah, 30% were in grade 10. The reasons that were found as they did the record review was about half of the students. Forty-nine percent of the changes in grades were requested as a result of teacher error according to the procedures that we have in place. A third of the grade changes were done at the request of the students, of student, teacher, administrators, or parents. And the distribution for the remaining was 10% for other reasons, and 9% did not have documentation. In compliance, the summary of findings, that was the reason for grade change, with compliance with grade change procedures, 66% of the audit records did use the correct grade change form, which you may remember from last year was one of the issues that we saw. But again, this is only two-thirds, which means that there are still times when the incorrect grade change form is being used. Seventy percent of the records had, of the forms had the proper signatures, which means, of course, that 30% did not. Eighty-two percent of the records had documentation placed in the cumulative folder. And in 75% of the records, student work was attached to the form, and evidence to support the grade change was available in 62% of the records. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Coulson.
Our current administrative procedure, 5121.1 for elementary school students, 5121.2 for middle school students, and 5121.3 for high school students, provides the necessary steps for principals to follow in authorizing and recording grade changes. These steps have been in existence for over 15 years. One additional step was added to the procedure in August of 2016, which requires the school instructional team to convey to the teacher within 48 hours if a grade change was authorized that was not initiated by the teacher. A new administrative procedure has been drafted that provides more clarity and explicit timelines for the grade change process and appeal. This new procedure is aligned to the new online grade change process that will be available July next school year, for next school year. During the summer, we will make sure that all principals are trained on the new administrative procedure and the online grade change process. A webinar will be created that will allow principals and teachers to access the training documents at any time throughout the school year. A uniform PowerPoint presentation will be created that will be shared with all teachers to ensure consistency in messaging. An email address will continue to be offered to teachers, principals, and administrators, and parents to allow them to email and ask questions about the changes. And ongoing training based on quarterly audit results will be conducted.
I think, Dr. Wallace, you're going to talk a little bit about the technology changes.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. When we looked at the corrective action plan, some of the findings and recommendations that we saw were improving the processes of the grade change process and also increasing the controls available in this paper-based product. So what we looked at is making, improving this by changing it to an electronic application where some of the advantages will see that all users, one of the issues that we had was that there were several different versions of the grade change form being used. By switching to an electronic version, all users will be logging into the same system and using the same forms. Everything will be electronic, all the evidence, all the approvals. It'll be a central repository of all that information. And all of the grade changes will be searchable, so we can see how many grade changes were made, by who, and when. There will also be workflows and alerts. When a grade change is submitted, it will automatically be emailed as an alert to the next person in the workflow. Okay? And I'll just show a quick demonstration of that in a moment. So before I begin with the, just the screenshots, just to show you where we are, I'd like to thank the instructional staff and the technology application staff for designing and building this application. Currently, we are gearing up, we are beginning the testing, the accepted testing of this product. We are going to have a pilot in four of our schools, Charles Flowers High School, James Madison Middle School, Croom High School, and Walden Woods Elementary School. The goal will be that the application will be live next year for all schools. So what we're looking at, I know it's a little bit hard to see here, but what we're looking at is different individuals, teachers, principals, in some cases, an instructional director and a sit manager, may be individuals that submit grade changes. Next slide. As a teacher logs into the system, what will come in will be what the teacher is taking. These are the courses that the teacher teaches. Okay? Next slide. And if they were to select one of those courses, it would list the students that are in that course. Okay? And if they wanted to make a grade change for one of those students, they would select one of those students. And what you see here is, up at the top is the student information, and it's highlighted. It's sort of a yellow color. That is read-only. They cannot change that information. It's just readable, shows you what that's, who that student is, grade, course, those kind of things. In the next set, there will be where the grade change occurs, what quarter it is, what the change is, from what, from what number, you know, 80 to 90, those type of things. Down below will be reasons for the grade change, comments, and then there'll be an ability to attach a file to show the evidence of why that grade change occurred. Okay? And then they will submit that grade change to go through the next process. The arrow is pointing to a yes value, meaning that that, a grade change has been requested, and an email has been sent to the next person in a workflow. If a teacher submits a grade change, the next person in that workflow is the principal. The principal will receive an email saying that they have a grade change request. Okay, go to the next slide, please. In that, in that next slide, we'll list the different grade changes that a principal is requested to make. Okay? And they can click each one of those individually and keep, go through the process. If we go to the next slide, you can see that this information is from the student in the previous slide where the teacher made it. Grade change, the principal can either authorize it, not authorize it, or put it in pending that they need more information. In there, it basically shows who made the approval. Okay? They can add comments to it, and then they can submit for approval or disapproval or pending. Next slide, please. Once the principal approves a grade change, the next individual in the workflow is the grade manager. So the grade manager is responsible for going into SchoolMax and actually making the change inside of SchoolMax. Okay? So in this situation, an email would go to the grade manager or managers, there's usually two in each school. They would receive that email, they can go into the system, and again, it will list all the grade changes pending for them to enter into SchoolMax. We go to the next slide, please. Once they go in, and go to the next slide, sorry. They can go in as well and look at the teacher that created the grade change request, the principal that approved it, and also in here will be a grade change is made into the, into the system, into SchoolMax. In some cases, this will be the last part of the workflow. In another case, in the case that it changes the annual grade or the final grade of a course, the next part of the workflow, it would go to a transcript manager. So if we click next slide. Okay? This shows, this, this here basically shows that the grade manager has approved it. Again, now it's being sent to a transcript manager. We click the next slide. The transcript manager will also, when they log in, they'll also receive an email if a final grade has been changed. If the grade change affects the final grade, an automatic alert will go to the grade, to the transcript manager. The transcript manager will go in, they will review the request, and then they will approve it. And once it's approved, okay, they will have gone into SchoolMax and approved it and put it in. The nice thing about these systems is they're integrated together. They review between SchoolMax and the grade change application to verify that all grade changes have a grade change form. Okay? And that's where we are today. We're, as I said, we are, we're training the staff in the four schools now, and they'll be utilizing this system to test out the application for next year, but they'll be using it on third quarter and fourth quarter grade changes. We'll make appropriate changes as necessary to the application. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks. So if the board has a few questions about the first quarter review.
Is that a question? I was curious about the, is there a way for parents to track this in any way?
No, sir. Are you talking about the grade change application?
Yes, and sort of going through the process. I know there's different stages here, or to get an update of where it is in the process. Is that something you thought about going through, sort of, maybe directly do this, but to have a way for parents to understand where they are in the process? That's all.
Currently, the current version has no, parents do not have access to this system.
Would it be a huge, a huge issue to include that?
I'd have to go back to the team, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams.
To piggyback on Curtis' question, it was about, it is about parents. How are they informed about this process? Now that we have, on slide 13, there is a new procedure that's coming out in July of this year. Are we informing the parents that there is a new process that's going to occur and how they are, how it's going to be implemented?
So there should be three new administrative, well, not three new, two revised administrative procedures, the grading and reporting, the attendance, and then a new administrative procedure on the grade change process. The grade change process is not new, it's just more explicitly stated and additional directions. Not only will parents be informed and trained, not only will teachers and staff members be informed and trained, but then parents will also be informed.
And on the procedure, the one thing that I heard, that the procedure that is, that was currently being used is 15 years old. And we may
No. Let me clarify.
Okay.
So the steps, which can typically be found on page nine or 10 in either 5121.1, 2, or 3, provides the steps necessary for the grade change process. That has been in existence for over 15 years, those steps. What did change is in August of 2016, we added one additional statement, which required that if a grade change is made and it was not initiated by the teacher, that the teacher must be notified within 48 hours that a grade change was made.
Right. So the procedure, the process
The process.
Was around for 15 years, and you made
Minimally.
Mm-hmm. And you made one change.
In 2016.
In 2016. So my question is around a bigger issue. We have a number of procedures, processes that are in place that have been around for a long time. And as we heard today, there are a number of teachers that have been around for a long time. And I think I heard some chatter at some point about there is a, a way that we look at old procedures and see if they're relevant, to look at the process and procedures and to see if they're being adhered to. Can you talk about that? How do we do that?
So I'll speak about it, and then I'm sure Ms. Battle might want to chime in as well. Several years ago, we went through and looked at all of our administrative procedures and the date that they were crafted. We then assigned them back to the departments that they originated from and asked them to update and revise, or make a decision if they wanted to delete, which means get rid of the administrative procedure. We had some procedures back from 1976, so we did delete a few. And those that needed revisions, teams made either minor revisions, sent them back to general counsel for review, and those revisions were updated. If they needed major, it took a little bit longer. So for myself, the other deputy superintendent, and the chief of operations, we all review the administrative procedures that fall under our the administrative procedures that fall under our purview. So in my case, for teaching and learning, the academics team is right now looking at ten administrative procedures that they're in the process of reviewing and trying to update or delete or revise. Once we, the team makes those revisions, we then send them to the executive cabinet members for review and input. Once that's done, then it goes to general counsel. General counsel will review, provide any feedback or update. Once it's then done from general counsel, then they have now created a new system where they send out a mass email to all employees with the listing of the new administrative procedure and kind of a summary of what that administrative procedure outlines.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate all that detail. So then the, the question falls to say, where are we in that process? Are we at fifty percent done? Are we at, or we?
I can only speak for my division, and we are, as I stated, we have about ten. One just came recently that I just sent to general counsel, and then I have three that are based on the audit that are done and are going through the process of going to executive cabinet and then general counsel. But that would have to be a question that would have to be answered by the other deputy and the other chief of operations.
Could I just ask for a follow-up information, just to see where we are with that? Because I know we have a, a large number of policies and procedures that have been in place for a long time, and I, I like the fact that when I go on there, I could see you have it designated, the new policies and procedures, which is very helpful. But what I'm getting at is that we do not want to have a repeat of policies and procedures being done different ways by different people. And I know some people have been, been around for a long time and some have not, and so that's what I think this audit sort of uncovered, that there were people doing policies and using policies and procedures different ways. Thank you.
Ahmed Burrows, Wallace in Boston. Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you. Could you go to slide eleven, please? So on slide eleven, it says sixty-six percent of the audited records use a correct grade change form, which means thirty-four percent did not use a correct grade change form. And then at the bottom, it says evidence to support grade change was available in sixty-two percent of the record, which means evidence was not available in thirty-eight percent of the records. So because thirty to thirty-eight percent of the changes are still suspect, even after all the vetting and changes to procedures, that concerns me. And that number, thirty to thirty-eight percent, albeit that's a little more than the Alvarez audit sample findings, that one-third of the grade changes were improper and resulted in either the students not earning their degree or not having proper documentation, that's concerning, that the Alvarez audit and what it shows is consistent with these numbers, the summary of findings, even after changes were made or started to be made months ago. And I get it, I, I know we're going through some growing pains with this, but I just, I just think we would have seen some improvement, and it's concerning to me that I'm not seeing that in these numbers. The other question I had, or series of questions, as it relates to the audit, and I know it's probably been a question that's been asked several times in different ways, maybe not in this format, in this forum necessarily, but the question I have, and the question I think many community members have, are why were only school-based employees from Duval High School dismissed from duty when the issue of graduation rate increases was countywide? Is, is there something that can be said to that, said to the community that has this concern?
I, I don't believe at this time that that is something we're prepared to do. We are prepared to discuss this grade review from first quarter, however.
Okay, just, just a couple of follow-up questions. Should we expect leave or removal of more high school employees in the coming weeks? Like, is that part of the, the next quarter's plan in terms of addressing this issue?
I think, I think the best advice I can give you, and perhaps someone else has some suggestions as well, is that we submitted our plan to the state board, and we're in the process of working on following up and complying with that. I don't know that I anticipate any imminent things right now. You heard people tonight saying, take care, you know, do, find these people too. You hear other people saying, you know, we can't fire our way out of this. You hear all those kinds of things. I think that we are trying to be thorough in our evaluation, train people, review, try to get better as an organization, which, which is what audits are supposed to help us do. And so I think that's about all the comment I have.
Okay.
Ms. Ahmed, just to provide a little bit more, you asked a question about second quarter and the kind of future. So one of the things that we should know is that the A&amp;M audit came out, I think, November one. We were already close to the end of first quarter. So the reality is that the first quarter review actually should show this. Second quarter review, which is, I think, on its underway or soon to be completed, will hopefully show the training that was done, show that the webinar that was done, and show the information that was shared. So we should see some growth, but just remember that while the audit started, well, the noise, the news, not the noise, the news of the audit started in the end of spring, in, in June, the results came back almost towards the end of first quarter. We immediately went in, started with a whole new training process, procedures, every principal got packets. So our hope is that we see improvement. And I would, I've, I've said this a number of times publicly, you asked a public question. This is similar to the student safety action plan. If you think about it, for us, you know, Judge Savany Woods was a really big situation in our district, and we went through growing pains, as you mentioned, Ms. Ahmed, as it relates to how to deal with that. And there were some, a lot of things that happened, I think it's fair to say. But each quarter, we saw increase, you know, adminis, increased adherence to procedure and policy, and this year, we see a, a lower decrease in the number of people on administrative leave. And I think it's fair to say that we also see that the system is responding to safety issues better, maybe not perfect, but better. So I, I caution the board to see immediate results, because that's not what you get with ten thousand teachers, twenty thousand employees, and over a million grades, if I'm right, Mr. Watts, that are entered in, almost all by humans. So at the end of the day, that's part of the process that I think we're, we're trying to show improvement on.
Okay. The timeline I was thinking of was the implementation of new administrative procedures in August, and then this quarter one started January twenty eighteen, I think, in terms of the review based upon Alvarez report and things like that, correct?
So new administrative procedures will not go into effect until July two thousand eighteen. We can't start a new administrative procedure in the, in the middle of a school year.
I, I got it. It's just that there were some administrative procedures that were changed in August.
Correct.
So, yeah. One more question. We, the audit that is, or the investigation that is being triggered by the governor, how would that affect the audit that we're doing here?
Are you talking about the?
One point five.
Alvarez and Marcel?
I'm talking about the one that was recently announced.
So I'm not sure that that's resolved yet, you know? First of all, the legislature's not over, and secondly, we have, as we said we would in January when we sat before the board and in the document review with you, we've issued an RFP for an audit, as we said that we would, and we've issued in that RFP a monitoring piece to make sure that we're staying on track with what we said. So I would say that what we have said we were going to do, we are in the process of doing.
Okay.
Mr. Burrows.
This is for Dr. Maxwell or whomever. When the results first came back in from the initial audit, you mentioned lack of training. Is that correct? Lack of training led to a lot of this stuff?
I believe that's what the audit report from Alvarez and Marcel pointed to.
And do you concur with that?
I believe we need to improve our training, and we've been doing some additional training some.
Okay. On page eleven, similar to what Ms. Ahmed did, I noticed that thirty-four percent of the audited records used, did not use the correct grade change form. Thirty percent did not have proper signatures. Eighteen percent did not have the documentation in the CUME folder. Twenty-five percent did not have student work attached. Thirty-eight percent did not have evidence to support the grade changes. Based on all of that, my question to this administration is, similar to Ms. Ahmed's question, are you recommending termination for all of those individuals who are clearly not following the policies and procedures as it currently stands?
I think the short answer to that is no. I think that teachers, principals, assistant principals, other counselors, other people who do these grade changes are making errors, they're using the wrong form. I don't know that that rises to a termination. We can certainly check with some of our labor partners, whether they think that their employees should be dismissed for not using the proper form, but we continue to train and to improve.
I just ask that you treat all employees equally moving forward. I, I have another question. How do we currently monitor our graduation rate? Dr. Maxwell?
We, we, the state is the one that announces the graduation rate. There's data, it says that kids have met the requirements, and there's a back and forth in the records from the state, and then the state tells us what our graduation rate is.
How does your office monitor student per school throughout the school year, whether students are on track for graduation or not?
So my office doesn't do that directly. That has been a school ba, school-level piece of whether, you know, kids on their report cards. Part of what you saw, Ms. Dr. Watts, reviewing with you, is automating this so that there's a better ability of our district to do that, because it hasn't before this been something we've ever looked into a computer and see that way.
Let me be more specific. Last year, every school, your office assigned, or the deputy superintendent's office, assigned a goal of what their graduation rate should be. On that form, there's a worksheet that had every student's name on it, how many students needed to graduate in order for them to hit that goal, and that was reported and done in central office. What is currently taking place now in that regard?
So, so Mr. Burrows, and I don't, I'm not going to sit here and keep going back and forth over things. We're here to do the review tonight of the first quarter grades, the first, first quarter review. There has never been any debate or discussion that we have a strategic plan that this board is well aware of, it has strategic goals for improvement, and we are working to improve those outcomes. And part of that is providing tools for schools to use to improve graduation rates. In fact, if you, and I know you were at the state board in January, the new state ESSA plan holds school districts accountable for improving graduation rates. It's one of the things that districts are on. Organizations use tools, they use strategic plans, they put strategies in place, they differentiate instruction, they do a lot of different things to try to move kids forward.
I, I think I'm not being clear enough. I'm asking what tool are we currently using? I understand everything you just said. I'm asking what tool are we currently using to monitor what we're currently doing?
So, Mr. Burrows, I, I mean, this was reported, I think, a couple of days ago on Fox Five. I can speak specifically to the information we've received from the deputy superintendent's office. While central office is no longer sending out worksheets that identify student's name and sending it to individual schools, we learned very directly from a high school principal that talked about what they're doing inside of their buildings to monitor student performance. And it was actually, I, I'm pretty sure, maybe you did or didn't see that particular interview, but Mr. Scott from Frederick Douglass talked a lot about what tools and learnings they learned from kind of years of work in our system and what their, what strategies they're utilizing in their building. So that, that's the answer. I know kind of the line you're going, but the reality is that school principals have the ability to identify the needs of their students, and they receive support, whether through high school principal meetings that happen on a regular basis, through cluster meetings, and support from their IDs and associates.
So is there no central office tool anymore? That's my question.
No, there is not.
Okay. When I look at the Alvarez audit, Alvarez mentioned that PGCPs management currently does not monitor what's happening on a school level. And so the fact that there is not a tool in the central office level goes directly against, and I, and I can pull, I can read it verbatim.
So, so Mr. Burrows, I, like, we, we, I, I actually concur with Dr. Maxwell on this space. I mean, we're, we're having a, the reality is that the conversation we've had has been going on for a while. Either central office is doing too much, or central office isn't doing enough. The question here for us is what we have put in front of you is, there is a first quarter review that shows that we need a lot more work. Our, our, our staff need a lot more work as it relates to grade change forms, as it relates to what forms are in folders or not. So what the system has done, whether we agree or differ, we can disagree on that piece, is try to provide, put things in place for schools to have the tools they need to make improvement in their buildings. And I'm not trying to be adversarial, but at the same time, we can't have it both ways. Either central office is engaged and involved in providing support, or central office isn't, and A&amp;M said that we just trust principals. The reality is that we have to find a good balance, and I think the system is trying to improve to find a good balance.
I, I have to add, I'm sorry. I, I want to make it very clear that principals aren't making decisions in isolation. They have a professional school counseling team that works closely with them, and that should be able to tell you by student where they are at the end of each quarter. So each quarter kind of tells a better picture. So at second quarter, they could say who right now is on track for graduation and who potentially at the end of second quarter is failing. By the end of third quarter, you have an even greater picture of that, because now you have three quarters worth of grades, and you know whether students have gone to summer school, I'm sorry, evening school, or in this case, done the Apex online learning process. So if you were to go to a school, I'm sure the associate students could reach out to any of the schools assigned to them and find out how many students they currently have that are passing or potentially on the fence by, definitely by the beginning of May after progress report. That number gets to dwindle down even smaller. So I, I don't want to give the impression that it's not being monitored. It can, it is being monitored at the school level, and associate student can go to a school and get that list. As a former principal, I had a list that I kept on my desk that I monitored.
I appreciate that, and I would ask that if we can get that in mail, as you mentioned, I would like to see that list. I, I don't think, I think there's a, a big difference between pressuring and, and monitoring. I mean, those two things are not one in the same, Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could, just got one or two questions on slide ten, just one back. Question, and hopefully a, a concern remedied. What would constitute the ten percent of other reasons? Can you just give us examples of what those other reasons would be? Anything? Okay. And, thirty percent, anything? Just walk me through a scenario where a student, teacher, administrator would request a grade change, just any particular reason that's justifiable for that thirty-three percent.
So I think a couple of us here are, you know, former principals. I could tell you that if, if, if deadlines weren't met in the term, in, in terms of, you know, progress reports, or if, if there was makeup work that, that came in that needed to require a, a, a report, if there was, I'm trying to think of a couple of other reasons, if, if, you know, we require that a certain number of grades be entered in at a certain time, and if parents are monitoring, and that's not happening, and they say, well, you didn't give me fair time to work with my child, you know, in terms of a parent. I mean, there, there could be reasons, you know, last minute, you know, reasons. I've had students who, who came, who, who had medical issues that required them suddenly to miss a significant amount of time, and yet because of, you know, that time, you know, we allowed them after the deadline to make up that work as, as I think was appropriate in those, I mean, so there's a good number of reasons why people might do grade changes.
And would a, a parent or staff member, student, they have to submit that in writing, I'm assuming, do, do we have proper protocols established and advertised in our schools that students, if they desire a grade request change, that they know the proper steps to go? Do I go straight to my guidance counselor? Do I go to my AP?
Yes.
So what we currently do that we start at this school year is a robocall goes home, the
Do I go straight to my guidance council? Do I go to my AP?
Yes.
So, what we currently do that we start at this school year is a robocall goes home the day that report cards are released to every home, elementary, middle, and high, every student's home, letting them know that they have five days from the receipt of their report card to appeal a grade if they find that they have a grade that's an error. So, we currently do that process and will continue to do that every quarter. In our new administrative procedure, we're going to provide a form for a student or parent to complete requesting a grade change, so it's in writing. Right now, typically what a student or parent will do is just send an email directly to the teacher to say, hey, I want a question or dispute of my child's grade. And then they use that to begin the process of investigating and making that change. But we're going to provide a form for them to do that in the future.
Perfect. Wonderful. And then my last question was about the forty-nine percent. The phrase teacher error rubs me a little bit wrong. What would constitute a quote teacher error? I think ultimately the error kind of falls on the board really, but what would constitute a teacher error?
Wes?
So, there's a number of different things that can happen. A grade book can be set up improperly. So, each course has a percentage of homework, classwork, and testwork assessments. If that information is set up improperly in the grade book inadvertently, okay, that could calculate the wrong grade for a student, okay? And that could, you know, legitimate reason that you would submit a grade change for that student. You know, other things, you know, you inadvertently put in a grade as a classwork, but it's an assessment. There's all kinds of things that you can do inside of a grade book, you know, that could cause an issue with that, not putting an assignment. If an assignment's not placed in there, but, you know, it comes in later or whatever, you know, it's missing, but they found it and they put it in, it can change a child's grade. Those are just some examples from the grade book aspect of it.
And I know this audit was just for the first quarter, so that was right after, in the midst of the investigation being released to find a report. And I know there was some conversation on the presentation tonight about professional development and supports that we have given in training thus far. And so, I appreciate that. I just wanted to air my distaste for that phrase teacher error. It did rub me the wrong way. I'm sure it rubbed a lot of educators and a lot of my colleagues the wrong way. I don't want this being, you know, being put on the shoulders of our educators, so just wanted to share that. I thank the administration for the presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Boston?
I have a couple of questions and I want to thank you for putting this report together. I want to thank you for the technology group, Dr. Watts, on putting together some technology to bring us up to twenty-first century because I think we've long overdue. But it seems like it's a lot of steps here and it's a lot of people that have to approve, 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 approve. So, how long does this process take? Because I get a lot of emails from parents who feel like their students had a, teacher didn't put a grade in right for them, there was, you know, was something needed to be corrected. And usually this comes just as the, maybe the end of the school year, that grade needs to be changed before the end of the school year, if this comes in the fourth quarter. How fast can this process go with these different layers of?
So, Ms. Boston, I just want to share that basically the electronic version is really the paper version in electronic form, okay? And it is, it's a lot of work. So, a teach, you know, if a teacher starts that process, they, you know, a teacher goes to the principal, okay? So, the paper process is teacher, principal, once it's approved, then it gets carried to a grade manager. A grade manager has to change that grade in school max and then it gets carried to a transcript manager, okay? And then if it's an end of year grade, that has to be changed on the transcript. So, it's following the same workflow? The beauty of this is it's all electronic. So, you know, there's no more carrying. So, I fill it out, the principal gets an email. Soon as the principal opens it up, they can go in and they can approve it or disapprove it or ask for more information, okay? Once they hit approve, it automatically goes to the next person, okay? So, it can go quickly, but it also depends on how quickly individuals respond to those alerts.
Yeah, so is there a timeframe? I know Dr. Goldson.
I'm going to answer your question.
Okay.
So, this year, what we did is put in a timeframe. So, students have five days from the date that they receive their report card, students and parents. And then after that, it's approximately two weeks that we expect that entire process to be completed.
Thank you. That's what I was asking, but thank you. Thank you. That's a name.
Anybody else for round one? Seeing no other round ones, round two, Mr. Burrows.
This is Mr. Wallace's question. I just want to help you better understand this. There are three options listed on a grade change form for the reason. One is teacher error, the other one is documentation or makeup work, and what was the third one? Oh.
It says other.
It says other. So, if you put other or if you put documentation or makeup work, all that, all those documents have to then be provided in the CUME folder. So, it's student in assignment and it has to be reflected in the folder. Through my own research in this topic very deeply, some principals encourage teachers to mark teacher error because if you mark teacher error, you do not need to provide any documentation to show why it happened. And in many cases, it's, you know, and I've seen the emails, so I know what I'm talking about firsthand here. In many cases, it's not, it's not an error from the teacher. It's just the easiest way to get a grade change done without having to, you know, provide all the documentation and support. And in some, and in some registrars actually refuse to change a grade unless they had the documentation. But when you say teacher error, you don't need to put documentation at all. You don't even have to justify what the error is in writing. You just check that box. And so, I just want to provide some clarity on that.
Thank you. So, seeing no other comments, we will move on from this discussion item to our next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda, item five point oh. And I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items five point one through five point six under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Members of the board, items five point one to five point six require board approval of proclamations commemorating Child Abuse Prevention Month, National Autism Awareness Month, Observation of Earth Day and Week, School Library Month, Mathematics Awareness Month, and PBIS Emphasis Week.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve items five point one through five point five under the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items six point one through six point eight under the budget consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Members of the board, items six point one to six point eight require board approval of the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty compensation improvements for ASASP unit two and unit three employees, fiscal year nineteen non-resident tuition rates, fiscal year nineteen facility usage rates, fiscal year eighteen approved operating budget increase in restricted FTE, April two thousand and eighteen expenditure requirements, the MEECITHW contract, award of design, build, services contract, and an award of a construction contract for work at Hollywood Elementary School.
Thank you, colleagues. We have a motion to approve items six point one through six point.
Can we pull six point oh seven for a separate vote? I just have some questions.
We'll pull six point seven.
Six point one.
Anything else? So, then I will take a motion for six point two through six point six and six point eight. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yeah, I guess I can, yeah, yeah, you can, no, you can ask the question.
I just had a quick question about the non-resident tuition rates. Do we know how many students participate in that program?
I can get that information for you. I've got the budget amounts, but I don't know exactly how many students makes up that dollar amount that we receive, but I can certainly follow up and get you the exact number of students.
Is it broken down by school?
It, I don't know. I know it's, we have it broken down by grade and we also have it broken down by special ed, but I can seek what information we have and get that back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Thank you, that motion carries. We'll go to item six point one and let's put a motion on the floor to approve item six point one. Anybody want to put a motion on the floor to approve item six point one so we can discuss it?
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve item six point one. Mr. Burrows?
I have a question. Under the law, who has the authority to approve raises for individuals in ASASP or any collective bargaining unit? For any of the lawyers?
So, the Board of Education approves salary increases for those in bargaining units.
In all bargaining units?
Yes.
Okay. So, who does the CEO have the authority to approve raises for?
If you're talking about the provisions under hospital eleven oh seven, Dr. Maxwell or the CEO can set salaries for his executive level team.
And his executive cabinet?
Yes.
Mr. Lucci, do you agree with that? You agree with that as well? I reached out to Dr. Maxwell's office and I got a list of those individuals.
Is this germane to the motion?
Yes. Yeah. I reached out to Dr. Maxwell's office and I got a list of the members of the executive cabinet, Dr. Davis, Dr. Goldson, Dr. Watts, Mr. Pfister, Ms. Hill, Ms. Battle, Dr. Green, Dr. Coley, Dr. McGuire, Herman James, Doug Anthony, Mary Young, Christian Rose, Quinn LaMason, Nora Morales, Yusef Antar, Mark Bossett, and Robin Welsh. Is that, is there anyone else that, in your cabinet that I left out? Or was that the cabinet?
Yes.
And so, Dr. Maxwell has the authority to give anyone on this list that I just raised, I read, a raise?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
So, when the legislation first passed, there was discussion at the time about which executive level people the CEO could set salaries for without requiring board approval.
Right.
And there was an agreement that it would be for those people who are on his executive level team, his, more like his direct reports. So, I'm not sure that everybody that you just listed is one of his direct reports that falls into that category.
I see. So, anyone that directly reports to him, he can give a raise to?
He sets our salaries. And so, for instance, when it comes to the board in closed session, it doesn't necessarily require your vote.
Okay. For his executive team, for his executive cabinet?
Yes.
Got it. And but for collective bargaining units, it's the Board of Education. What about for, what about for management? Is that also the Board of Education?
Yes.
Internal audit?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify because I was, well, I wasn't too confused, but I wanted, I wanted to clarify for everyone to know.
So, do you have a statement on the contract?
I'm pleased, I'm going to vote for it. I encourage all of my colleagues to do so as well. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Question to call on, item six point one, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. May I please have a motion to put item six point seven on the floor? Moved and seconded. Ms. Ahmed?
Yeah, I just had one question. How in the world did we under budget two point four million dollars? That's a, I mean, that's a lot of money. I just don't, and I don't understand the role that you have and what you do, so can you please enlighten me? Just for some clarity, I'm looking at the board action summary and it says budget implications, two million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. Contract award is over the approved budget for three of the schools as noted above. An additional funding will be obtained using a realignment of funds.
What page on the action summary are you looking at?
It's the first page, it's the board action summary. Oh, sorry, page two of three.
Page two of three?
Yes.
Just the, this one right here.
Gentlemen?
At this moment.
But it says, but it says approved budget for three of the schools, so.
There have been some changes to the budget that were unrelated. The capital budget had some changes made to it. It's not, it's not that there was money there, but there were changes made to the capital budget and as a result of that, what we end up doing, so you understand what the realignment looks like, is that we take projects that we know we're not going to be able to complete and we have projects that we need to do, like these, the ADA projects. And we realign projects, i.e. the laying projects or moving projects to another fiscal year so that we can do projects that are basically emergency projects. So, when you have an ADA, which this is a compliance, these are all compliance issues. So, you're dealing with elevators and things like that. So, there wasn't enough money left after you finished doing all the other ADA compliance items to fund this. So, we had to take money from another project that either wasn't going to be completed in the fiscal year and we're basically reapplying it so that we can do these projects that have to be completed.
Do we know which projects, project or projects that came from?
No. Generally, what we do is take the money from, there are a bunch of projects that we have either decided not to move forward with for various reasons. For instance, to give you an example, where a project has been budgeted and the bid came in higher than the, than the, than the project budget was for it, we may cancel that project and reapply that funds to other projects. And so, there are things like that. I don't have a list in front of me of all those projects.
Okay. I appreciate the fact that you all are trying to address ADA compliance. I know I've mentioned that at previous board meetings, my concern around that. And I would love for us to be in compliance across the board, across all our schools because a lot of our schools are facing the same issue that this, these awards are trying to fix. I'm just wondering, what guaranteed do we have from administration that we will try to be, or you will try to be more accurate in those estimates?
Well, the problem is not so much the estimate, it's the need. We are woefully underfunded for capital projects. None of our money comes out of operating. So, that means that none of the money that is utilized by the school board for the operations of the school functions for the capital projects. That comes directly and is controlled directly by the county. So, we don't get to pick how much gets moved around. The administration doesn't choose how much money gets to go into our capital budgets. That money is determined by the county. And if we should happen to come upon a moment in time where the need for a critical project outweighs the need for a, what I would call discretionary project, one that could be delayed, then these types of things happen. And it's just because we really have a major limit. If you looked at our EFMP, which we'll probably be talking about later on, the original request in the EFMP for our long-term budgetary funding was for four hundred and twenty-five million dollars a year, which we are not going to get. So, we're trying to manage both the maintenance of our systems, which we're giving money to building services to help with smaller updates, and we're also using this money to do our major modernizations. So, when you look at a budget that's so hamstrung like it is right now. So when you look at a budget that's so hamstrung like it is right now, to try and deliver these functions, we have to do these things in order to be able to meet the very minimum needs that the school system has for our students. And we would, if I had more money that I could spread around and budget more concisely, or if I had projects that I didn't have to terminate, in order to do that, I certainly would.
Okay, so, uh, just to repeat back, you've identified that these are critical projects? These are projects that we need to do because they're compliance projects?
Have to do.
Okay, and are you also saying that the county is the one that verifies the, the budget amount for certain projects?
Yes.
So, the county government are the ones that we're thinking of putting this specific amount for this budget item?
No, they give us money for certain categories.
Okay. Okay, I got you now. Thank you.
So you know the questions. I'll put the vote before you for item six point seven. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Thank you, that motion carries. Uh, we'll move on to governance second reader. And colleagues, since these are board policies, I don't need to yield to Dr. Maxwell. So I'll first just ask for a motion to approve items eight point one and eight point two on the governance second reader.
Can we split this?
We can split it.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion for item eight point one. Moved and seconded. Discussion on eight point one. Is yours eight point one, Edward?
Yes.
You're up.
Colleagues, um, I'm not sure if it's the best thing to do, uh, to disband the disabilities issue advisory board. It's a major issue throughout the system and I recognize that it has not been functioning properly over the last few years. I would prefer to remand it to the policy committee. Work with, you know, I would be willing to work with the policy committee personally on this issue. Actually, I sat on the DAB committee when I was in high school and then so did Boardman Murray. I, I think it's worth figuring out how to make it work. I mean, we have special needs students and, and employees all throughout the school district. And this is, this is one of their avenues to communicate directly to the school board. Once again, I recognize that it has not been operating the way that it should. I mean, I think that, um, potentially a different liaison could help with some of those issues. But I think it's worth finding great people who care about, uh, special education individuals with special needs across the entire county, whether they're staff or students or community leaders, and getting us in a room to figure out how to make this policy work. Um, and so I would, I would like to, has there been a motion yet, Mr. Chair? Oh yeah, there was. Um, I, I would like to, um, I would like the board to consider, um, voting against ending this task force, uh, against ending this. Sending it back to committee to figure out if there's a way that we can, um, keep this going.
Thank you. I want to ask for a point. I want to ask the folks who made the motion to clarify. I just, we've had a couple of discussions about this and none of us remember this being first reader. Have these policies come to us as first reader yet? Because if they haven't,
I don't think they have.
And it's first reader, we could have time to have policy made, at least.
I'm pretty sure they were first reader, yes.
They did come to us as first reader? Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
Then we're tw, I was just looking through the, it was on, okay, thank you. All right, so, as I leave Ms. Boston to kind of explain what the thinking was.
Yeah, well, it, it's a recommendation that came from the policy committee, although I said on the policy committee that recommendation came from the policy committee. As we, um, we got recommendation from our legal department, our special ed department, and I, the, the thinking around this is that this is not a special ed policy. It's more on facilities. It's a, it's an ADA compliant, um, policy. And, um, from what is reported from us from the system is that now they have a department that handles those type of, um, ADA requests and they are fulfilling that. And some of the struggles on this committee was that we did not have an avenue by which those complaints to come to us. Because a lot of those complaints, um, they went to the administration and they were handled that way for access, like if someone, uh, needed a, 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 a wider door or if they had a crotch or they needed a chair lift. And with the renovations of a lot of our buildings over the years, since when this policy first took place, a lot of our buildings have now been retrofitted for a lot of those ADA compliance. So there is not a, it, you know, I, I, you know, the po, the, the committee worked very hard, um, uh, the committee worked very hard. What the recommendation did suggest on this policy was that two members from the DAB committee, two strong members that I saw, that I believe that really would, would work good, uh, and know the law, on the ADA law. We recommend that they would be, in addition to our PCAC, our parent advisory council board, to sit on that board, um, to give us a, um, um, you know, to keep a pulse, per se, on the ADA compliance piece. So that was a recommendation that came from the, the policy committee that voted on this, um, to come forward, uh, to, you know, to get rid of this policy. Thank you.
Oh yeah, I, so, colleagues, I was in a lot of these conversations. I know a lot of the work that the committee has done on this. A few days before this meeting, I had a conversation with Mr. Burrows and I know Mr. Burrows is a very strong advocate for special education. He's talked about it at this board meeting several times. And he kind of opened my eyes to the, to the possibility of maybe we can use the same structure, the same people to do different work, almost. Like we, like Ms. Boston had said, this is, a lot of the task of this committee is the facilities piece of it. And I know that there have been conversations, or I recall conversations in the policy committee of, you know, how do we look at the charge of that committee? And so I, I wanted to ask Mr. Burrows if he was committed in, uh, or interested in amending to change that charge or looking into that. Because if that's possible, then maybe that's an avenue we should take. Maybe we should table this for now, pending conversation, if he's willing to, to, to look at that. Because, and now that I'm thinking about it, if we disband, uh, the committee, I think it might be a lot harder to reinstate a committee that's focused on some of the issues and needs like special education than it would be to just change the charge of it. But this is now what I've been thinking after conversation, so that's what, that's what I'm thinking, um, that we should table this for next time pending, uh, further review.
So, and, and I'll jump in in that. I wouldn't necessarily object to tabling. I would, um, I would suggest actually, uh, the, the, uh, the idea of kind of thinking about how this and, and the parent and community advisory council can, can work together is one that is definitely worth pursuing and maybe we want to spend time talking about that. Two reasons. One, we just have so many committees going on. Maybe if we can combine them, uh, that we can really help to get the work done better. And in fact, um, the parent and community advisory council is going to be having a retreat in April at some point that's going to be, get on the calendar. I forget the date that they just decided on. And one of their charges is to really think about a, a new and different kind of version for the, for the parent and community advisory council. Maybe it can be bigger, maybe it can take on more work. So it could be a good discussion to figure out how these could be combined. And it may, you know, again, worth discussion. What happens, happens. So did you make a motion to table? Just wondering.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to table?
Question, so what's, so what happens with the tabling of this motion? I'm just curious in the meantime.
Right, and maybe it's, yeah, what's the right, what's the right verbiage? So, because tabling, what's, what's the one that just brings it right back to the next meeting?
That's what, you, you.
Table, all right, no, so what's the one that gives us more time?
A motion to recommit to committee?
Motion to recommit to committee?
Right.
That's what you meant, right, Ray?
Mr. Valentine?
I mean, the committee has made a recommendation. Um, so is there new information that you want to bring the committee for reconsideration or is it just further discussion that we've already had?
I would think that it would be looking at amending the charge of DAB. So instead of rescinding DAB completely, looking, relooking at the charge of DAB and rewording that to address some of the current needs of our system as it relates to special education, special needs.
As, as Chair, I wouldn't be against that. I'm just curious about, um, Ca- Carolyn and folks who are on DAB to discuss that because she would be the one who would be responsible for doing it also. I know we had the lawyers come and brief us on that and I'm not sure whether we, that was an option at the time, but again, I, I'm not going to be, I don't want to be in the way of that having a conversation if that's something that others want to do. I'm just curious about whether, I believe we've discussed that and that was an option, but I just.
I think that was the original, when I first brought it to the policy committee, that was the reason why I brought it to revise the policy. It was the committee that decided that they wanted to rescind, not revise. Based on the testimony that you got from administration.
Understanding the, the current function of the committee, I'm see, of, of the DAB committee and how, as you just said, that it's being, what it's set out to do is already being done. I think also the recommendation to have two people join the parent committee was also sort of a compromise for folks on the committee who, um, would understand that if you did re-revise that, then you would, you know, have that option. So, I mean, that's the recommendation. Um, it was majority rule. I'm just, again, I'm, I'm more of a facilitator on the committee, I like, as you are Chair, but, um, I believe that this is a recommendation of the committee. I believe it works in the short term, but if there's additional need to do that, then we can revisit another committee in the future.
Thank you. I have Ms. Roach and Ms. Grady.
I support Mr. Burrows and Ms. Med's comments about just, um, trying to maintain, um, some way to continue discussion about this population of students that we, we need to be sure we're serving. It strikes me that we're always talking about how to better collaborate across committees and this is a, um, a theme we should be looking at across committees. So maybe there's some way we can build in language to say that each committee will discuss or be briefed on, um, disability, um, issues as it relates to their charge in, throughout the year. I also see that in, in the charge here, it talks about discussing employment and hiring issues, which will be important. And then proposed new, new school construction. And with our CIP, there's going to be a lot of that. So, um, I think it's important to keep it in existence somehow, but I support the idea of further discussion, uh, however that would be done best to figure out how to update it and revise it.
Ms. Grady?
Yeah, I was just, um, trying to, Ms. Boston is right, it was brought to us and I think there was just confusion about just the charge of what was supposed to be taking place with this policy. And we did invite, like, Dr. Mason and I think a couple of her colleagues came and we had a lot of questions just about, um, and it seemed that there was just confusion around the charge and the, and, and bringing clarity. And I think at that point, we were just trying to really look at, at that point, what, what to do to restructure. So I, I'm open to having further conversation about, um, how to best, how, how to best do this work and put it, we initially thought it could be adding people that, that would be their focus in the PCAC. But that might not be, it, it might be, uh, uh, I, I do think Ms. Roach's idea around integrating it into all the committees may be a good one. But yeah, I would, I would agree to, to further discuss.
Mr. Chair? In, in as much as we talked about the, um, having two people join, one recommendation was also to, um, in some ways, try the two people on the parent committee and not disband the committee, but sort of table it and see how effective the two people are on the committee. And if that, then you could reconstitute it, um, as opposed to continue it in its current form without a mandate and a function that's useful of the time of the members of that, of that group, if that makes sense. Like, so you don't disband it, you just sort of say, all right, let's try it. And if after, you know, you could, at a certain date, you say, we have not seen what we wanted to see, and then you could reconstitute it with a lot of other things, so you don't have to actually create a whole new board policy. That was one option we talked about, but that's something I think some people could be open to.
All right, thank you. Mr. Burrows, you have another comment?
Yeah, I think that could be, um, like a temporary compromise, not dismantle it, appoint those two people to the, uh, PCAC committee. That will allow myself and other colleagues to rework the charge and figure out how to make this work. But in the interim, I have no problem with having two of the DAB members serve on the PCAC committee. That relieves the pressure of being on the gun to, to create a solution immediately. We can, I guess, work as colleagues through, look what other jurisdictions are doing, um, and make amendments to this policy, maybe before then the school year is out to start at the beginning of next school year, so.
That's, that's fine. And I, I would imagine, just to your point, I would imagine that once you, once we do that, once you change the charge, that members of the group are going to want to rotate off based on the fact that the charge has changed and they, they joined off of a certain expectation and then, and so you'll have to find new people, which I think we're used to doing. And go through that process. So, yeah, again, as committee chair, I'm agnostic on a lot of these things. I just want to make sure the process is, is fair.
Thank you.
Okay, colleagues out. I'll just say this. My, my first inclination was to vote no to table on principle, but I won't do that because I think we're heading in, to more, making a good decision. But I would just remind my colleagues of two things. One is we have committees for a reason. And what, it's really important is if issues come up in committees that we're concerned about, then we need to kind of let the committees know so that the concept is the committees work hard and it, when they come to us, it's pretty done unless it's pretty dramatic. So I really implore folks to do that. And the second thing is, that's why we have first reader. And so we kind of blew two opportunities to really have, had the opportunity to address this. It's not, and Ms. Burrows, it's not a reflection on you, just because it happens, you know, it happens to us a lot. So we really want to make sure that our processes are going to work for us and be, and, and, and continue to kind of get efficient. So that we, the opportunities we have to fix these things upfront, we do it when we, when we have a chance. So with that, uh, I will, I will happily vote with the, with the, the will of my members. Right, the motion is to.
To recommit to committee, I think is the proper terminology, correct?
Yeah, we had to fix it because, because tabling would require that this exact same motion be on the agenda for the next meeting and we don't want that.
We want to rescind to committee?
We, we want to rescind to committee, I believe, is that?
Or recommit to committee, recommit to committee.
That's the motion, to recommit to committee. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Thank you, that motion carries. Can I please have on the floor, uh, um, a motion for item eight point two? Committee, can we put it on the floor? Moved and seconded. Ms. Ahmed?
Oh yeah, I just want to, I feel like I've said this a lot, um, at our retreat in committee. But I just don't know that our committee structure and the way that it is currently is working, as well as it could or as well as it should. Um, and I don't know if putting into policy a structure that doesn't work, in my opinion, would be necessarily the way to go. I don't know if we've ever had a conversation where we sat down and kind of looked big picture, visioning almost of what do we want our committees to look like? What is the type of work we want to get done and how we, can we get there? And I think, um, at least as, as far as I've come onto the board, um, when I first came onto the board, there was already this, um, kind of draft of committee policy. And it was, I felt very much that we were focused on that as opposed to, did we look at the big vision of what do we want to accomplish and how do we get there? So for that reason, uh, I don't, I, I won't be voting in support of this. But I've mentioned this several times in different places that I don't know if this committee structure and the way that it is is necessarily the most effective way to address our work, so.
Thank you. Seeing no. Thank you, seeing no other voices to weigh in, I will put the vote before you on item eight point two, committee structure, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Thank you, I believe that motion.
I'll vote no as well.
Any other no's, so that, that means that motion would care. Yes, that motion carries. Um, do we still got first readers, yes, an introduction for, uh, I'll give the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items nine point one through nine point one-two, or nine point twelve, under new business first readers. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, except nine point two to nine point twelve, because we already took care of nine point.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
He, he, he hasn't introduced it yet.
They're first readers and do not require discussion. Go write it.
All right, I've, I've heard a move and a second. All those in favor of presenting these as first readers, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you, these have been adopted as first reader, we took care of our emergency item. Yes, ma'am.
So, in, in the discussion that we just had about, um, the second reader, you just mentioned that, um, we had two opportunities to have some discussion on the second reader. But we just heard, um, Dr. Maxwell say that it doesn't require discussion.
Right, so what tends to happen with the first reader, what kind of should happen is you get the first reader, so you get a chance to read it. And then if you have questions and debates in between the first read and second reader, you contact either the administration or the other folks, so you could have that conversation. And then if, if it's resolved, and hopefully if it's a discussion or, or issue that can be resolved, it gets resolved. If not, then you debate it in, in second reader more fully.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense? So that, so.
Clear as mud, but thank you. I, I understand what you're saying, it just gives us four weeks to look at something versus the, the one. Three weeks versus the one.
Two weeks, right.
Move the call to question.
We haven't, there's nothing on the floor yet, is there? No, we don't have anything on the floor.
It's been moved and seconded.
What's been moved and seconded?
Oh, we, we are, I moved, I moved to adjourn.
Let me, okay, um, colleagues, we are at follow-up items eleven point O. Co- uh, colleagues, follow-up items from the February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen board meeting will be posted in board docs upon receipt. Colleagues may have a motion to approve actions taken in executive session on Thursday, March twenty-nine, two thousand eighteen. It's been properly moved and seconded that the Board of Education hereby approves actions taken in executive session on March twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, and are as follows. Labor negotiations, legal matters, personnel matters, student appeals, and administrative matters. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you, that motion carries, colleagues may entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved and seconded and adjourned, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks, have a wonderful weekend and happy Easter.